Good evening. My name is Elisa Vekhales. I'm going to call to order this Monday, November 16th, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting to order. In the boardroom, I am present along with Board Member Hildy. On Zoom is Board Member Bellamy, Board Member Mitchell, Board Member Donley, Board Member Holloman, and we are waiting for Board Member Marsete to join us. I'll announce it when I see it. All members are present and we are good to proceed. Next up is our flag salute. At this time, I would ask if Dr. Bishop, can you kick us off?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Denina people, both past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chinon. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Did any board members wish to make any modifications or amendments to the agenda? Okay, I know that in our Finance Committee meeting, Board Member Marsete had requested that we add a student nutrition COVID update to our non-agenda items for discussion purposes only.
Yes.
Are you there, Member Marsete?
Yeah, I finally got here. Yes, I wanted to make an amendment to the agenda for non-action to discuss the challenges we're having with nutrition and feeding our schoolchildren while school is not in the classrooms and once it does begin in the classroom.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it because I'd like to finish that discussion. Change screens here real quick. Member Marsete, if you can take a look at the motion, does that cover your...
That's good. Thank you.
Are there any board members opposed to the addition of this to a non-agenda item? Non-action, yep. Okay, not seeing any. That passes by unanimous consent. The rest of the agenda as amended, are there any more additions or modifications from board members? Not seeing any. At this time, the agenda is approved as amended. Next up on our agenda is Board Conference and Committee Reports. The first committee will go ahead and call on since it is super fresh is Finance and Member Marsete. And you're on mute.
We discussed the CAFER and I don't have it right in front of me, so somebody could help me with the capital. I'm trying to think what CAFER stands for real quick because we always just call it CAFER.
Consolidated Annual Financial Report?
Thank you, because I didn't have that in front of me. So we did discuss that briefly. Each board member will get a hard copy of that to review so that later, hopefully at the next board meeting, the next Finance Committee, or even the work session, any of those opportunities to ask for the questions. We did talk about an audit that was done, and so that audit was shared with us on school security. And so that will be addressed by the district and we'll have a report forthcoming on any findings that were found. We did talk about the budget and some of the things that we're going to be looking at that will impact our budget, and we'll have further discussions on that as we move along. We actually got our CAFER a lot earlier than we have in the past, and I just want to commend our chief financial officer and his staff and all those that were involved with getting that CAFER to us so early so that we could have some of our discussions earlier. The other thing we talked about is on our agenda, there was an audit for IT, for backup recovery. As everyone knows, IT is very busy right now with keeping our students online. So we'll look at our next Financial Committee to review another audit that we may want to do this school year. And let me see, did I miss anything? Nope, I believe that was it, and there will be a lot more discussion as we get closer to our budget.
Awesome, thank you. Next up, Board Member Bellamy with Communications Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Communications Committee met on November 10th, and we had a pretty full agenda and good discussion. We pretty much talked about our strategic planning, especially the community input piece that I'm sure Member Marsete will give an update on. How do we get getting those our draft goals and guardrails out so that the community can give us some feedback? We also talked about briefly talked about updating our, or at least we not updating, just our email response language, but we we had a discussion about that relative to the distribution of those emails. We talked about what now that the elections are over, we will proceed with planning our legislative lunch, and that was on hold because we get a different contact after each each election, well, potentially after each local election. And then our legislative priorities, we continue to discuss those, and we are gathering, continuing to gather information from all members on our legislative priorities. And we had our update for the community as well as a flyer for that we that is that was connected to our strategic planning, that whole community feedback piece. Our next meeting is December 8th, and it will be at 4:30 in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Board Member Hildy, Governance Committee.
Thank you. We also met on November 10th. One of the more significant issues we talked about is a proposed policy on boundary review and adjustment that could potentially begin in 2023 and then be on a 10-year cycle. The purpose is getting it onto a cycle. But that would be a significant change. We expect perhaps to recommend it coming out of our next committee meeting. The board members have feedback on it. It would be an excellent time. Member Rachel and I worked on that. So be sure to look at that policy. And we also talked about cell phones, policy that had come up a couple of times before. Right now, there's no push for it. Administration is going to reach out to principals sometime in the future with no timeliness to that, certainly more significant things happening right now. But to come back with recommendations on if there's a way the board can support principals in that area. And then Member Mitchell and Member Bellamy are working on anti-racism policy and are waiting to hear some feedback maybe from administration and then some level of community feedback. So if you have time, I hope you will find time to read the policy and send Member Bellamy your feedback so she can incorporate that and make the best use of our time. I don't know, did we set our next meeting day, Katie? December 8th, 3:30. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to go to the next topic, which is community outreach. We've got two things coming up this week that I wanted to have a couple of board members talk about. On the 18th is a board member service training that Member Hildy is leading, and just wanted to give her an opportunity to give a shout out for that coming up in a couple of days.
Oh, thank you for saying that. Yeah, so it's very exciting. Our board has a strong desire to equip people running for school board and just community members to understand the work of the board and what governance is, what does a governing body do. So it will be an interactive training. It's not too late to sign up. You don't have to prepare anything. So you just email our Board Secretary, and it'll be this Thursday.
Wednesday?
No, it's Wednesday.
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00, so that should be on the website as well. So anybody's welcome. I think we have a student signed up. So you don't have to be declaring a tent to run for school board, but certainly a wonderful thing if you're just curious and low pressure. It's going to be fun.
Thank you. And then the next piece that I wanted to was turn it over to Board Member Marsete. She is cheering up the Ad-Hoc Committee for our Strategic Goals and Guardrails coming up, which also has a Community Town Hall coming up on Thursday that I'd like to give her an opportunity to update on.
Yes, thank you. Very excited about this. We have a town hall scheduled for November 19th from 6:00 to 7:00. It will be in Zoom. We're hoping that we might even have an interpreter button there for parents or students who don't necessarily have English as their first language. We're working on that. I'm sure that'll be out there if it's available. We'll be doing this as a Q and A. So short presentation on what the board's draft goals are and guardrails, and we'll talk a little bit about that during the town hall, and then open it up for Q and A. Just a reminder, it is going to focus on our goals and guardrails and not the opening of schools at this time. But I also want to say that when Ms. Bellamy talked about our flyer, our Communications Department did a great job in putting that together, and it actually has a QR code that you can scan and go to a very, very short survey to give any kind of feedback you'd like on our goals and guardrails. So we are looking forward to getting community, parent, staff, all the feedback we can. We want to make sure that we're representing the community's values and have put those forward in our goals. We heard you earlier in the year. It seems so long ago, but we believe that we've captured everything that was given to us through all of our outreach with the community when we first started this. We just want to make sure that what we had put forth, and we do believe we have based on the comments and feedback, is what our community would like to see. So we're looking forward to it and looking forward to everybody participating. So thank you.
And just wanted to put it out there. We did get confirmation. We do have a Spanish interpreter that is already in place. And if there are other languages, if I could email that in to our Board Secretary, Katie Grant, and she can work on seeing if we can get an interpreter for some of those languages. So trying out something very new and very cool and hope it works. I do see a hand raised in the queue. Board Member Mitchell, did you have a question on this?
No, I just wanted to do a community update when we're finished.
That was all I had on that Ad-Hoc Committee, so please go ahead. Thank you.
Can I add something real quick? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just want to commend Ms. Bellamy for putting our flyer out there to the community councils so that they now all have that. So when we talk about it, they should already have that and be looking at it. And any questions we have or help that we can provide in that, when we've got check community council meetings, Ms. Bellamy has done a wonderful job of getting that information out. So thank you.
Thank you. And Member Mitchell?
There is so much going on. It's very, very exciting. And I did forget to mention both of those things at my community councils, but I've been to four community councils in the past week. And for the most part, they were very understanding about the change in the school start. They really, you know, respected our decision and how hard it was, and so there was a lot of discussion around that. We also, I previewed the guards, goals and guardrails with them because the final copy of the document wasn't ready yet. And they were particularly excited about the career and college-ready goal that we've developed. So that is really exciting, and I will definitely reach back to those community councils and let them know about the Thursday event. I also mentioned to the community councils that the board is working on a resolution to, Member Marsete and I are doing a draft at this point, to share with the Muni and the state to hopefully get everybody pulling together to get those community transmissions down because we really do need to get our kids back in school, and that is, you know, as everybody understands, that's a big precursor to that happening. I also have had the pleasure of talking to a lot of teachers and principals in the past week. And again, I think I've mentioned this last couple of board meetings, the preparations that were being made in advance of the opening were just tremendous. And it's great because that work is not for naught. When we do go back, they, you know, everything is getting more in place, and I think people are starting to kind of see how that might work. It was also really wonderful to see the different principals approaching things in different ways based on their school environment, knowing their families, knowing their community. And there was actually a study I just saw today from the Northwestern. It's a combination of Universities Northeastern, Northwestern, and Harvard, where they had talked to families around the country about what is their desire? Do they want to go back in person or do they want to do remote? And a couple of our schools, one Title I school in particular, had reached out to their families, and it was interesting to hear that, you know, one might think in a Title I school with a lot of parents who have socioeconomic challenges, that they definitely want their kids to be back in school as soon as possible. But they also have a lot of risk factors. So the study indicated that students from different subgroups don't necessarily always support going back to school in person. And so it was really nice to hear that the principals are so connected to their communities and what that individual community's needs are, and figuring out, you know, how can I meet the needs of my learners here in this building best? And it was just interesting to see the different things that were going on from school to school. One school that had a lot of free space and some extra people was able to create smaller classes. One school was able to offer Zoom as a parallel course of action. So it just really made me very optimistic that when we do get to that point, you know, in giving giving our principals that agency over their schools and their incredible knowledge and passion for their communities, that we're going to see some really wonderful solutions to meet the needs of all of our students and parents. So it just was a super exciting week.
Awesome. Thank you. Member Marsete, did you have your hand up one more time?
Yes, I don't know if we've announced this or not, but Ms. Fargo Bellamy has been elected to the Board of Directors for the Alaska Association of School Boards. I was not able to run again because I'm going to be leaving. So I just wanted to congratulate her and I, yeah, and I believe that Dina Mitchell is... Did you get re-elected, Dina, or are you still finishing out your term? I didn't hear you.
All right, I muted myself. I am finishing out my term.
Okay. But anyway, I wanted to say congratulations, Margot, and you will make a great asset to that group.
Thank you very, very much. Awesome updates, everybody. Next up on our agenda is goal monitoring. The topic appears to be first quarter grades, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Bishop and her team.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. And as we start, before I move on with the presentation, I always like to share that this is not a model of what goal monitoring is according to the Association of School Boards, of course, that we are continuing to keep this item on the agenda, but just provide data. Some of the parameters around goal monitoring is trend data. And certainly, what we have is a lack of a trend because of the pandemic and grading and changing semesters into quarters is very, very new. How we engage students, how we communicate with parents, it's all very new in regard to grading. And so I wanted to share that caveat that there is a limitation in regard to this, that there isn't a historical comparison that is a true comparison. We pulled some grades, some we were able to just report this year. And just in general, so that we know there is a difference between grades and achievement, and certainly both have their function in understanding student outcomes. And to share a little bit, achievement is really related to kind of more of what students know and are able to do. And we've heard that like an achievement test, we, you know, different things such as the peaks or maybe a map is really demonstrating and asking kids to demonstrate what they know. Grades are in a way demonstrating what they know, but they also serve in the capacity of demonstrating perseverance. Because we don't necessarily know, grades are really driven at the individual teacher level, that we do have some guidelines, but then an individual teacher's classroom really guides the grading. And so what we don't know, and another limitation, is, you know, assignments or late work or was it a collaborative, you know, assignment for a grade? So all of those things both show value. I do want to say though, especially, grades are becoming more and more important to colleges. And one of the, we might think of, oh, we just, for college kids, if you're out there listening, you might say, I just need to make a great SAT score, a great ACT score. And truly what colleges are seeking, not just during the pandemic, but otherwise, is what kind of courses you're taking and what are your grades and the activities, whether they're athletic or non-athletic activities, because they show that perseverance again. They're more job-like, and actually, grades have been found to be more of a predictor of success in college. Why? Because you can work hard at them. It's about the perseverance. It's not just about, you know, waking up and kind of the knowledge you're born with, but how are you going to use it? And so with that, I want to say that there are value to both of those, but they're very different. As we move on, I'll just start now with first grade, and these are the quarter grades. And this is the overall elementary. The manner in which these are displayed is very difficult to look at. We really received these on Friday, and we're able to just stick them in charts and give them to you. So they, we're going to spend a little bit of time on these, just orienting ourselves so that when we get to the subsequent grade levels, we'll really have an understanding. Of course, we have last year and this year for this elementary group because we did have a quarter grade in elementary. There was not a quarter grade in high school. There was a progress report, so high school would be a little different. And what we see is just some changes around the edges in A through F and then O, S, and N. And to share that we look at grades 1 through 3 generally with O, S, and N, and grades 4, 5, and 6 generally for A, B, and C. But there are individualized programs that really do both. So some of our ABC programs, the Anchorage Basic Curriculum, might use ABCs in the younger grades. Some of our optional might use a portfolio, so there isn't a grade. So please know that the number of grades is very different. Last year at this time, there were entered that we could capture was over 48,000 grades. And we were able to capture at this point in time 33,000 as far as A through Fs, and then of course, O, S, and N, 71,000 were captured last year and 40,000 this year. That equates to fewer students primarily, but also, we're really focusing on certain subjects in schools and they're limited. So I wanted to share that that is a good thing. What we're seeing is just some minor changes, some significant good things, a change in increasing perhaps in the A category in the ends. That's really not significant growth. That is not statistically different there. And again, for quarter 1 for elementary, this is all grades from kindergarten. Actually, kindergarten does a different type of assessment. So these are really first through sixth grade if you're in an elementary school. And then we have sixth grade through eighth grade if you're in a middle school. So sixth grade is one that is split as well. If you move to the next, the question that we're asking is where are the grade levels and what do they look like? And this is what I mean. This is not a very good display of data. It was meant to be able to deliver something on Monday evening when we just received it. So if you take a look at, again, it's the the two levels are just the different kinds of grades they get from A through F and O through N. And if you take a look at first grade, say the As, the count of As really isn't a lot. So please take a look at the count of the number of grades that were given. I would share that the decrease of 8.75 in first grade is not significant. Just look at the number. Really, in grade level 1, the majority of kids are in that O, S, and N. And so if you look at the bottom, it's always important to follow your N. When we say your N, that's your number you're considering. It does skew averages. And so just look at the As to the Os. It looks like, wow, that's, you know, a major change. But really, it's not a significant amount of kids when you're thinking that we have four, you know, 3,500 kids in first grade. So don't worry too much about that. But if you notice, the ends just went down slightly, which is a good thing. You want the lower grades to go down, the upper grades to go higher. You know, if you have an A and B, you'd like to see those increase. Ds and Fs, you want to see decrease. That's a general rule. If you look over at sixth grade and juxtaposed like what we're seeing in first grade with sixth grade, there's a little difference. There are actually quite a significant amount of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs, and that's generally the grade given. They did utilize Os and Ns for subjects that not core teachers were, or their core teachers were teaching and just kind of presenting some information in art and doing some art and doing some other things. So they were teaching it but not doing the full-scale standards with it. So they did give Os and N for those. If you take notice, just the difference in As did decrease a little bit. We wanted those to increase Fs. That did increase a little bit. We wanted that to decrease. So that's just a way to see the ends, the As and Bs, Ds and Fs, and Cs, of course, generally things that change, generally things are in that bell curve. Then we take a deeper look and say, well, who are these kids and who is it actually impacting? We're going to look at ethnicity as well as other student groups. In the ethnicity range, if you take a look, and again, we can start with kindergarten or grade 1. Actually, these are all the grades. So these are first grade through sixth grade, and these are the different student groups. And if we notice, we made some significant increases in some ethnicities and significant decreases in others. And so students in our city are experiencing school and success differently as they had before. This isn't a new, a new piece of, you know, aha moment. We continue to see a significant disparity. We've had, actually, Member Mitchell just referenced it, that there are some different hurdles or headwinds that some of our families face, both academically as well as perhaps medically with conditions. And we talked about policy, you know, equity policy. And that's why the board is working on these types of things because of the differences in, you know, outcomes for kids, and this happens to be the outcome for grading. And you'll notice the different changes. Again, many 2% to 3% is not significant of a change. Again, many, 2% to 3% is not significant of a change. Greater than that is looked at as more significant of a change. So we did have some decreases in As and Bs. Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander has us concerned, as well as Alaska Native and American Indian, because those had some significant changes, sometimes doubling and tripling in some of those areas. So then we look, and these are all online, this is published, it'll be on this report. If you look at the next one, it's about the student groups. And when we define student groups at the federal level, sometimes they call them subgroups. It's a subgroup of the main group. We like to call them student groups. And so the top one is the students in that group. The bottom is the students not in that group. So they, it is a dichotomy of the students. It's not, the students in economically disadvantaged are not in the non-economically disadvantaged. But you could be economically disadvantaged in, as well as gifted and in English language learners, and you could be in three of these. We did see some changes and the major changes statistically significant were in those economically disadvantaged students. That's where we saw the biggest growth in the Ds and Fs, as well as the biggest decrease in As and Bs or courses that we see for kids that signify, I guess, those are the grades that parents ask for, makes As and Bs. But again, C is kind of an average grade, we all learn that. But generally, it is the middle of the bubble or the middle of the bell curve. It's good to pay attention to the ends. English language learners as well. If you look at those drops and increases in different areas, special education wasn't as significant in some areas as others. And then gifted students fared better than their non-gifted counterparts. So these are just some student groups to take a look at that, as we look at data, it asks us the next question and the next question, well, what grade level? Well, how many? Well, what are the demographics? And we do speak to students' achievement and students' ability to move forward with headwinds and tailwinds. And some of us, again, I shared it last time, AJ, our board trainer, used the term in one of the sessions I was in, is that our families, ZIP codes have a lot to do with the advantages in education, what they found. So it's not necessarily directly related. He shared, you know, we got the house lottery, the parent lottery. Kids are born where they're born, and then public education is that great equalizer. So we always strive to do that. So this is elementary. I'm going to move to middle school. And at the end of this, I'm really going to summarize just some big items that we're tracking as we move into second quarter and tracking our plans for educating youth. So overall, middle school, if you take a look, one of the biggest categories that's going to catch your eye is where it says incomplete. And I'm going to define that a little bit for you. So middle school kids would be sixth, seventh, and eighth graders served in a middle school. Again, the sixth grade group is split up according to whether they go to an elementary school or a middle school. So here we have it. As just decreased a bit, as well as Bs in the middle level. We remained not statistically that significant of a difference in Cs and Ds. And then Fs, we decreased, and so that's a good sign. But we want to share what really the olive branch that the middle schools reached out, the middle school teachers, this is phenomenal, their plan with the teachers and the administration. If you take a look at incomplete, 14% of kids are over 2,300. These were kids who received an F at the quarter, which is technically the end of the semester, that class. They received an F, but lots of things, again, headwinds, tailwinds, not having the computers, not understanding, it being just difficult, especially for sixth graders who just entered into a middle school and they have no other understanding of a middle school. So what they've done and what we are doing and proceeding with is understanding that any student, they've already started to begin planning for a summer school. Any student that received an incomplete will be invited to participate in a skill-building summer school. It's not going to be about grades. It's not going to be, let's earn this. There's no credit in middle school. You don't earn credits like you do the high school, unless you take a high school course, of course, in middle school. But they're going to focus on those skills to really build competency in kids. If they go through the summer school and, you know, the sessions, then they can, and they'll be, you know, online and hopefully in person, they can then get a score, a passing score and move on. If they don't participate, those would revert to Fs. So we held them not as Fs, some were true Fs that they assigned, but these are very little, only 13 assigned Fs. These 2,300 students that would otherwise have received an F, we're calling them incomplete to be able to service them. If you look at pass, pass is a smaller number. Please know that pass is a grade, a pass fail in regard to students on individualized education plans. And that was the grading system called for in that plan, but we wanted to include that as well. You do notice a significant drop in the count of grades from last year to this year. Almost 48,000 last year to 16. Remember, they're not taking six classes. Not only did we decrease in ADM, Average Daily Membership, but we also aren't taking six courses. We're taking three. So do you see how that works out as well? Didn't want anyone to be alarmed there. But there is a significant change on the ends there. If you look at As and Bs and then Fs, but we have a plan for the Fs and just thrilled that teachers continue to get feedback from families. They want to focus on the skills, and so we're working out programs to be able to do that. We don't want to say anyone's a failure at middle school during a pandemic. So grade level, who are these kids then? Let's take a look. Grade six, these are the changes from last year to this year. Again, in A marks and B marks. And then if you look at the other end in the F, and again, the asterisk in the F is that, remember, they're going to incompletes. Those we look to to be incompletes. Sixth grade is about 200. Seventh and eighth are really the significant amounts of kids, over 1,000 in each of those that we're looking at for that summer school. Again, just you can take a look, we have 15% of eighth graders earned an incomplete grade at the quarter, which would be, you know, their semester-long three credits or three courses rather than six, if you will. We really predicted that sixth grade would have the most significant, but it didn't. It was sixth, seventh, and eighth building up to the number of incompletes. Again, we are going to work on that. Ethnicity in middle school, let's take a look at who are our kids? Again, Alaska Native American Indian and Pacific Islander, multi-ethnic. These are the largest groups. In comparison, white, non-Hispanic, 7% of the incompletes are in that category. Our Alaska Native Hawaiian is 21%, multi-ethnic 17%. Alaska Native, 27% of students who are Alaska Native. Asian is lower at 10. And then of course, Black and Hispanic are around 15% of those populations. So just wanted to give a mind's eye. This is saying that over a quarter of the kids who identify themselves as Alaska Native or American Indian, received a failing grade after quarter one, and they're going to have an opportunity to make that up. One-fifth of Pacific Islanders, so who identifies. So again, the student groups, so how would we, what other services are these students, student groups receiving? And if you take a look, economically disadvantaged, I do want to share that that is defined by the federal government. It is defined by certain programs in the public sector, but it's also defined by students who apply and receive free and reduced lunch. And in our school district, of our schools, about one-third of them are title schools, which is 28 of them. And I want you to really know that the poverty level is defined by the school district for which, for which, for the school district that's defining that. There is a bottom level and a top level of poverty. And our level of poverty is if 73% of kids in the school or more receive free and reduced lunch, then we claim them. We claim them as a title school. I want to share that my former district, this number was 45. There is a significant difference between poverty in the Matsui Valley and poverty in Anchorage. It's almost nearly doubled access. So you receive funds for your students, but the level at which your school is claimed to be title is very different. In Anchorage, 35% of our student population individually, which is 14,515 kids, it does change monthly because there's a report each month. You know, that is a moving number every month. Are classified as in this economically disadvantaged students. So if one-third of our kids are, they're concentrated in one-third of our schools as well. So economically disadvantaged, those who are not. English language learners, those who are not. Students with special needs, has an IEP or not, and then gifted or who are not. So if you take a look, economically disadvantaged, one in five students received an F in that category. And we've noticed that that above all ethnicity groups of anything. In ASD, that really defines success quite a bit in a lot of these statistics. Again, the title money is meant to, it started out as, it was chapter one in its history in the 1960s. It was meant to be given to schools to equalize the economics in the area. And so that's why we called, then the program turned to title, that's why we call it Title I. It used to be Chapter I, just to provide a mind's eye. So overall, high school, I regret that I cannot share direct comparisons. And the reason is, is that we changed two things here. We changed the number of courses kids are given to three in a semester instead of six. And we changed the semesters from 18 weeks to nine weeks. So in nine weeks, students take three courses. The next nine weeks, they'll take another three courses. At the semester, we will have six courses and be able to give a comparison of last year. We could not look at a comparison of this year because at this time last year, mid-quarter, there was only a progress report, not a completed grade. So in this area, we have these numbers and they are kind of what they are. We don't really have the incompletes. We left, as you know, the semester open or the quarter open, which is a semester, for a couple of weeks for kids to get things finished. We expanded the time to allow students to turn in their work by two weeks. Hence, this report is coming to you so late because then teachers worked, you know, extra to be able to accept the work, grade the work, and enter it to have a final grade. And so this is where we presently are. We don't have a mind's eye if these will change and how significantly they will change. But let's take a look at who our kids are who are earning these grades. In grade nine, we do have nine and, nine, 10, and 11, we have the D or Fs is more significant than in the senior year, which is a good sign. You know, for seniors anyway, graduating. And if you take a look, the Fs are about 14% of all kids in school. The As are upwards of 35 to 40%, which is excellent for students. And again, the pass is simply a grade determination by an IEP. So we will take a look at this and then be able to have some comparisons in regard to what did it look like compared to last year? But if you want to know, again, we dig deeper and say, who are these kids in these grade levels? Again, for some of our student groups, we have an equity of outcomes concern in our district. Nearly 28% of Alaska Native students who identify as Alaska Native are receiving an F and nearly 16% a D. You see that those numbers from Asian and white are two groups that do well in our district. And others, not so much, hence, you know, that disparity that we talk about. But where we're concerned is the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, as well as the Alaska Native and American Indian. Student groups, economically disadvantaged again, ELL, English language learners, gifted, and special education. Here, here again, you can just, we see a great growth, you know, success with As, with Bs. Those are healthy. Where we have concern is in the other end. The middle again, that middle of the curve is sometimes where things move to the middle. But on the ends, we have some concern in regard to who are the kids who are earning the grades that aren't favorable? And again, generally, they're students who have headwinds coming in. Whether they don't know the language first, whether they're coming in, living in poverty as defined, you know, by the federal government, whether they have an IEP, all those things are significant in our district and our grades for students. They're showing up as outcomes as well. So just in summary, just some big ideas, because there was a lot of information there and that we're going to really look into, is for elementary school and middle school, there's a downward trend for grades with the A and B categories shrinking and the C, and D, and F categories increasing. Some of those are not statistically significant, which is a good sign. It could be, you know, it is a rough year. It is different. And so some of those we're worried about, but others we're not. But in some of our student groups, it has us really worried because they are significant. This one's a big one. For the middle school data, the rate of Fs decreased, which we're happy about, but when we looked into this, the incompletes increased dramatically by 10 to 15%. Now, we didn't really give incompletes last year. We would have just given an F. So this is a positive movement in adjusting and teachers and principals working with families and figuring that out. But if we don't complete that skill acquisition through that summer school, those grades would revert back to Fs as it stands now in how they've designed the middle school with Dr. Johnson. For all school types, the elementary, middle, and high, student groups that appear to struggle the most with grade marks are, as we stated, Alaska Native and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. That Alaska Native American Indian group also showed the highest growth in their Fs and N marks. As you can see, with the white group had the largest positive growth with As and Os. So those are the two outlier groups. There's a large-scale trend of grade marks shifting towards the middle, Cs and Ds, which we see statistically. We all have heard of the bell curve. That's what happens in large-scale data capturing. It is in response to instability and stress of the times. And then student groups of most concern based on our data are our EDS or economically disadvantaged student group. Time and time again, in every category, they significantly demonstrated a struggle. And as members have shared before, sometimes there's, at this present time, when we look at their return to school and their return to support, we're just reaching out and finding different supports. Some gladly come to, you know, our reading programs and other programs and others really choose not to because they can't get sick, either for not having medical care or someone in the family cannot get sick because they need to go to work. And so keeping children at home is to go to work. And so keeping children at home, uh, is, 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 uh, you know, believed to be a, a better outcome than sending them. Uh, and so, uh, this concludes my report. Again, I, I totally understand it's too much data. I understand it's not meant to be the goal monitoring, but this is what we have at the time, uh, given the pandemic.
Thank you very much. I do have some hands up in the queue. Um, first one is Board Member Marset. Are you muted? Member Marset. Star, can you hear me? I'm gonna go with a no on that one. We'll come back, uh, to her. Uh, Member Mitchell?
Thank you. Um, so one question I have is the, I know that we lost students who decided that they weren't going to do, um, I'm assuming this is a combination of the ASD virtual and the, um, the non-virtual group, um, but it doesn't include the students who left the, their neighborhood schools to do, um, uh, well, I guess it would include our charter schools. It just would, people who went to in ASD, um, homeschools, it just wouldn't include students who, can you tell me what the, what the universities, and I guess my question is, is part of the decrease in, um, As and Bs possibly because the students who went outside the ASD to either be homeschooled or go to a private school or something else might have been the ones who, um, did that play a role in the dynamic here?
Thank you. That's a great question. Uh, these, these grades are for everyone who received a grade. So it would be charter schools, homeschools, all, all of our students. It didn't matter their program. Uh, this dataset is quite large and I would just guess from my experience, um, of 31 years and, and with my, you know, experience with data that, uh, I, I would not say that the, the downward movement was specifically because the smarter kids moved away. No, I, I would not say that.
And you said-
Or the ones that are getting achievement. I, I think that is not, uh, a correct statement or, or a correct assumption.
And you did say that we couldn't look at versus last year for the high school students because high school students go, don't get grades at the quarter. Is that correct?
Uh, well, at this time, they, they do get a progress report, but they're like, what these grades are is the semester grade where they get credit. And last year, after nine weeks, that wasn't a semester grade. That wasn't where they were, received credit. So we really didn't have a comparison. Uh, but we will, um, uh, Member Mitchell, we thought about that. And then what we can do is bring back, uh, in January, when all the grades are, are put in, that we can give the board a look at six courses in a semester and six courses in a semester, and then take a look at that.
Yeah. And I'm, I am hopeful that as the teachers and as the students are getting into the groove with the Zoom, that hopefully our second semester results will be, um, an upward trend from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Greg Bond.
Hi there. Hold on just a quick second, uh, Star. I want to do a quick follow-up on Deena's question real quick, um, because that was, um, mine, um, is a, a mother of a middle schooler and a high schooler. I thought they were both on a similar system where they were doing the three classes per quarter, um, but getting a semester grade for it. And so I thought we would have been able to review and book the same. I guess I missed something.
That's, um, that's correct, but, uh, at the middle school level, as well as the elementary level, you can operate with curriculum how you'd like because it's, you have a calendar and then you can change. At the high school level, those are actually statutory as well as policy credits. So there's a certain amount of curriculum that is covered and that they learn. So while they are the same, there's, uh, the flexibility built in. And technically, anything under eighth grade, that's not a high school course, is, um, kind of an update or a progress report of your grade, whereas high school is transcribed. It is like set, transcribed. That's what you're going on. And so because we felt it unfair to compare non-transcribed with transcribed information, uh, we decided not to, um, we, we really couldn't capture them the same because at the middle of the progress report, they, we don't know what they were expected to learn. Whereas at the end of the semester, we know what that curriculum is and how, and there's achievement markers. And so, uh, just not being able to know what was in that course, uh, we wanted to give, hi- high school is just always credit. Did we earn a credit? Did we not? Did we earn a credit? Did we not? Um, that's why all the other grade levels, I, I remember last year when we, um, finished in the spring, everyone else was kept, let's just keep kids engaged, but yet we had courses for high schools because those are the statutory required courses. Uh, we have more flexibility with everything under that. So we really couldn't define it, uh, to have a solid comparison. It, it would be unfair to teachers and kids to, to do that.
Okay. Um, let's go back to Board Member Marset.
Yes, thank you. I was having some technical difficulties. Um, so my understanding, um, Dr. Bishop, is that students that have incompletes, and I don't know if that's just middle school or all students, um, will be able to take a summer school that they don't get a grade for, but it'll remove the incomplete and it'll teach them skills or these study skills. Um, because my fear is even if they're taking the summer course, they're still going to be very far behind other students. I think it's going to increase our gap. And it's like I've heard several parents say, well, maybe I should just keep my student back a year.
That, that has been occurring. And, uh, let me better explain the summer school. So what we know about grades especially, so grades are really important for your GPA. But, but prior to a GPA and a score that, uh, folks are, are seeking, and, you know, high school kids, you're in school to learn. And so we understand gaps in students learning. And so we will, utilizing our systems, be able to understand, oh, kids in math, these eighth grade kids did really, really, or this child did really, really great in all of these math skills that prepares them for the next level, which is high school. They did really great until they got to the slope intercept. They totally bombed it. So then they failed the class. We are not going to treat, we are going to then see that we identify the skill of the child. Oh, this eighth grade child needs soap, slope intercept to be able to really have a sound foundation in math because we can tell through our assessment that that was the only thing they tanked, that, that chapter on slope intercept. But the other seven chapters, they were just fine and they passed. So we are not going to have a student go into summer school and have to take every single chapter again and redo the whole course. We are targeting the skill that the child doesn't have, building competency in it so that when they do move on, that's if they attend and they show growth, you know, that, that yes, they have it, and they move on to the next grade level, that they're going, we've set them up for success for the next grade level. Because as you know, some of the biggest indicators are failure at freshman level that leads to non-graduation. So we're trying to really go back to that thing of each grade level and the learning there is to set the child up for the next grade level to be successful. So we're going to target the instruction around what a child needs using the, the, really the, the, um, the information we have from them taking our courses as well as doing assessments online. We can capture these data to target what they need to know to be successful. So it, it isn't just, you know, learn study skills. It's literally learning what they specifically didn't understand. In high school, the summer school will operate the same way because if a child failed, that limited them in the credit they needed to graduate. So they're going into summer school to make up that credit. And, uh, there's different models for summer school, the one that accelerates you. It has different outcomes. There are summer schools that if you're just going in for the credit, pass, fail, you know, so there, there's different choices for summer school for high school, depending on the students, um, what they're going to do afterwards and what do they need? Do they need to replace a grade? Or do they just need a pass, fail to get the credit? And so we work with counselors, parents and kids in regard to high school. So we are going to have high school as well. It was very successful last year. Uh, we left it open. We let them come in when they wanted, you know, that flexibility of time they told us. Uh, but I would say that the, the middle school's plan is actually quite strong, stronger than I've ever seen because they're utilizing, uh, the data they have to target student learning, which is always why we should take an assessment.
And can I ask one more question? What about our students in transition? I, usually they're broken out. I didn't see them here.
No, um, we do not have them in here, but, um, almost 100% of them are in the economically disadvantaged.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, they are because they're in that program. It qualifies them for economically disadvantaged. So they're included in there. We can, uh, pull those data out for the board as well. But they are included in the economically disadvantaged.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. I appreciate the, you know, continuous, uh, information. I do have some reservations on comparing the year-over-year comparison. I don't, I don't think we get usable maybe information from that because of the high number of variables between it. But I do think it's very helpful to see the spread of grades across demographics. Um, so if we see Pacific Islander and Alaska Native getting a disproportionate share of, you know, Fs, that's very significant. Um, and so I kind of see the two-year comparison, but I just a little hesitant on it. But, um, my, one of my questions was, it said, you were talking about students, but I, I thought it was grade. So if it says like 3,000 Fs, is that 3,000, um, kids or 3,000 Fs, which could be 1,000 kids who got three Fs or some combination of that?
That, that's a good correction. It is marks. Sorry about that. It's the number of marks. So they're grades, yes.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Bishop, uh, for this information. It, it is very, um, helpful. Uh, I have a couple of questions. The incomplete, I think I understand it because Star asked that question. Um, but that is a new, that is the first time I'm hearing about, uh, incompletes in middle school. And, um, I'm just wondering, um, how, will, will parents, that, how do we let parents know about the, what that incomplete means? Because it actually means they're failing, correct? But they get the chance to make it up.
Yes. And all of that has been communicated. That, that's part of the school and the process, yes. And then they'll continue to communicate, uh, in regard to the opportunities to, to make up that learning.
Awesome. And then, um, okay, so it, in that, but that'll be a summer makeup, right? It won't be a-
You know what? It, there might be, um, other innovative ways. Right now, it's a summer school, but, um, we do have some intercession times that, uh, we could pull kids in, uh, looking at small group tutoring. So, uh, again, the, the schools have been amazing in, in designing, uh, things to meet their students' needs. And so it could be something other than that as well.
That's great. That, that's great. And then my other question has to just do with, uh, the special ed kids. They are, okay, so are these, these are special ed kids in general ed classes or all special ed kids? And then their needs are-
Are students that have IEPs. So it is inclusive of both groups.
Oh, okay.
The ones that are pass are students that are, uh, probably in, in, um, uh, less inclusive classrooms.
Okay. So I, and it'll-
High needs is the pass, just were they on a specific IEP or skill that they're given a grade for?
Okay. So then is the next step that, um, I'm just trying to drill down. And when do we drill down to see, like, why would a kid with an IEP fail, get an F? When will we look at that? Kind of, I mean, I know it could be attendance. It could be a lot of things. It could be just not having the, demonstrating the, what they know and can do. Uh, 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 because I lack the data. I just, I wonder, how do we get at the root causes?
That's a great question. And, and that really occurs at, uh, the building level because a root cause at one building in one family is, is not the root cause of another. Uh, as you know, we've, uh, established or, or maybe didn't know, but we've set up, uh, foundations teams. If you hear foundations teams in schools, uh, they are trained in understanding data, asking those questions, uh, really problem solving at their school. Uh, but, uh, what's happening in the pandemic is just highlighting what's already in our data. I would like to say that this is, you know, maybe due to this year, but it, but it isn't. We've had, um, Member Marset has articulated for, uh, students, uh, with, um, special services for, for quite some time. So, uh, all of these groups really, uh, you know, I can, uh, invite you, uh, to observe if you'd like, uh, data team meetings. Uh, many of them are scheduled quarterly. Uh, they look at, uh, what is it that we need to do? Uh, we shared, uh, two schools, um, a couple of years ago that made significant, uh, increases in, um, their student grades and achievement. And, uh, they were Bartlett and South. And, uh, just for example, they really shared their work, um, what we noticed and called them out and said, hey, can you share with every other principal in our learning, uh, in a general leadership meeting, what is it that you did? And while they both looked at, um, Alaska Native American Indian, one school had 82 students and one school had 426. So their ends were different. Uh, when we asked, what is it that you did to, uh, work with your student groups and your families, uh, one school said, you know, we just pointed out to our staff that look at our data, look what this shares, and they, uh, put a name to every student. That's how they defined it. We named every student and we saw who they really were and asked and really drilled down to what is it that we can do. And another school, they really, uh, use the term triage. We got a team together to look at students who, uh, to Member Hildy's, they really said, are these students just one grade or is it multiple grades? And really what they did was, um, change schedules to, uh, put in some free time, uh, during the day and had counselors and tutors work with kids because it was more about organization, uh, kids needing tutoring, being shy to ask, things like that. So, um, they operated and really shared those stories that that drilled down is really at the practitioner level. It's really not even at my level. Uh, we provide the support for principals. We provide, um, the research materials, uh, but really it's rolling up the sleeves at the building level and they've been, uh, absolutely fantastic. If I could tell one more story, it was, um, West High actually did an action research and I, I've shared this before where their counselors, uh, and this is just beautiful. They, uh, this was a few years ago. They took the kids who had an F mark at, um, a semester. So their course was still going on, but that was kind of the halfway mark. And they asked the teachers, why is it that you think kids are getting Fs in your class? And they had, you know, it's probably too hard for them. They shouldn't have been scheduled. They're not doing their homework. Um, they're not, they're absent. And then they took those data and recorded them. And then they went to the students and they, um, asked them, why is it that you are getting an F? Why do you think? I'm embarrassed to ask a question. Uh, I can't do my homework because I'm babysitting at night or I have to work. Uh, it goes too fast and I don't know, uh, how to get help. So they really had other issues. And then they said, well, what would it take for you to not get an F? And the kids said, you know, if I could come in, you know, 10 minutes after to do it because I'm just embarrassed to ask or I'm not going to ask. I mean, they really had these great things. And, uh, West High was so proud of that because it, I mean, it was just, it melted my heart because they, from the mouths of babes, they told us. And West High, uh, the teachers shared how they really just changed their thinking about what, what the reasons. Because sometimes you're just day in and day out, teaching, teaching, teaching. And when kids aren't learning, it is frustrating. And they began to understand the differences. And so, um, I love that you asked, um, but really there's, uh, probably 100,000 different ways that the schools work on it to drill deep. But that is the work of our instruction teams. That is the work of Dr. Johnson, uh, as well as, um, Dan Barker, when, uh, they work through those data teams. That, that's, that's the main reason to, to, to really support that. And of course, a lot of it goes back to, uh, inability to keep up with the courses because of reading. And so that's why we've really just honed in on reading. And I'm, I'm really happy that the, the board has chosen that, um, because we can set them up from the beginning, uh, without kind of a, a glass ceiling on their heads if they can't read, uh, past the sixth grade level.
Thank you. That was great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I lost my, my screen. All right. I don't see any other board members' hands up. Um, I know we have a lot to digest- I don't see any other board members' hands up. I know we have a lot to digest from this, to take a look at it and understand it. And it is attached to board docs, so all board members and the public can go out and go see it as well. And please submit all questions to Dr. Bishop going forward. Was, yep, and Dr. Bishop had a final comment or a comment?
And Madam President, I do want to acknowledge the limitations as Member Hildy brought up. There is not historical data to really do that comparison. We just pulled what we could and what we thought. But there are so many different things occurring that it was difficult, but it just shares an insight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in our agenda is public testimony, and I will go ahead and read a brief statement. "The Board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The Board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for in-person or telephonic testimony or to email written comments by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. These comments will become a part of the meeting record. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. If you have signed up in advance for in-person or telephonic testimony, you will be called on in the order in which you were signed up. You will have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a bell will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." So first up, we have, it looks like about 19 speakers, if I'm correct. And I do not see my first person. So it looks like Speaker Number Two in person, Sarah Price. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members and Superintendent. My name is Sarah Price and I'm a junior from Eagle River High School. But this time, let me be a little more specific. I am a student at the district's best high school and I'm in the top of my class. And this year, I have learned next to nothing. If that is what ASD is offering their top students, where does that leave everyone else? Because I'm not worried for myself. I'm standing here because I'm watching as kids I know fail classes, lose hope in their dreams, question whether they can even get into college, or conclude that depression is just how it is now, with many children getting medication and therapy for the first time ever. But more than that, I'm afraid that someone I do not know, someone I may never know, is going through all the same alone. Reopening our schools may not solve every problem, but through cross-benefit analysis of the situation by pediatricians and even our own superintendent, it is clear that it will do far more good. This time, it was the hospital staffing that was cited for the reason of not reopening. So I looked into it. And according to DHS data, right now Anchorage hospitals are at 82.1% capacity, which is actually a decrease since a month ago and a 54-patient drop. I do not, I too do not want to overload our hospitals. But keep in mind that that data is only accounting for staff beds. So I'm a little perplexed once again as to the reasoning of Anchorage School District failing our students top to bottom once again. I am also stumped as to why the district proposes to only send the younger students back when the opportunity does present itself. ASD cites that our younger friends cannot sit and learn on their own, which is true and true for high school students. We just take that on that responsibility and put up with it. You have also cited that younger children are not as susceptible to COVID, which is also true, but that only differs from the adolescent age demographic by a few percentage points. This is why I admire Member Marsette's leadership in opening the conversation to include all of your students, not just what is convenient. Although I have been told by many board members that you want to send us back, wants are nothing. Action is everything. As a great leader once told me, integrity is not just doing what is right when no one is watching. It is doing what is right when everyone is watching. So you may feel as though everyone is judging you in this moment, no matter what you do. But I guarantee it is what you don't do in this moment that will be what haunts you. So I pray that this district can come together to get us back after the holidays so the progress of students in this municipality of Anchorage can begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the telephone, Speaker Number Three, Terrence Dalton. Terrence, are you with us tonight?
I am. Thank you.
We can hear you. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Terrence and I'm a parent of two current and two upcoming ASD students. I would like to thank Member Alicia Hildy for contributing memorandum 062 to the agenda of this meeting. I encourage all other members to read it carefully as it captures the spirit of my testimony tonight. Since March of this year, ASD students, teachers, and parents have borne the brunt of the upheaval caused by this pandemic. This has been done without consideration to equity across our community. Our youngest learners, special needs children, their teachers, and parents in Anchorage all deserve better than the communication whiplash they have received from this board and our other elected officials. Not all students want or need to return to the classroom. But for those who do, as you just heard from one of your students, each day is an agony that this board can remedy but chooses not to. Please take seriously your obligation to lobby and stand up for our students. They have no one else who can advocate for them the way this board can. If restaurants, bars, and gyms remain open while our schools are at 0% capacity, while you do nothing, you become complicit in championing leisure over their education. If this board allows students to continue playing sports while keeping special needs children from their speech and physical therapists, you become complicit in that discrimination. Take a long look in the mirror. Review the report on quarter-one grades. Ask yourselves if you are truly championing an equitable education for all students in ASD. Families with financial means are hiring private tutors and specialists because online education is simply not enough. We heard a lot tonight that the changes in grades are not statistically significant compared to 2019. Which of you with a straight face would say that 2020 compares to 2019? Each of those Fs and incompletes is a real kid struggling in a real course in our district. And to them and their family, each F is significant. How many of them will you leave behind? How long will you remain complicit in allowing the most vulnerable in our district to suffer without the in-classroom instruction they desperately need?
Thank you. We're going to go back up to Speaker Number One, Nicole Kimball. Nicole, are you on the line with us tonight? If you can hear...
I am. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time for testimony today. My name's Nicole Kimball. My daughter attends a Title I middle school in the district, Central Middle School. And I just wanted to testify to let you know that remote learning is working for us. I think ASD clearly, like most everybody, every parent would want kids back in school in person. I want school back in person. But I'm also recognizing that this is a pandemic. And no matter how much we want that, moving to in-person school right now is not logical and is inconsistent with all medical guidance provided. So I do respect the decision of ASD to delay the start of in-person school due to our reduced hospital capacity. I think it's clear we're having record numbers of cases in Anchorage. We have hospitalizations that have hit a record high for the third week in a row. We have six hospital CEOs stating publicly that we're heading for a crisis in terms of healthcare capacity. And they're not just talking about the indicators I think that we're used to seeing as Anchorage residents, like ICU beds and ventilators. They're really talking about not having enough hospital staff, not enough staff to take care of sick people, whether it's COVID or otherwise. And I fully agree that none of this is ASD's fault. But I continue to support remote learning for middle school. And I am talking about middle school so that we don't increase community transmission and exacerbate this crisis. And the two things we've heard from the medical community and directly now from our governor is that we need to wear masks and we need to limit our exposure to people outside our immediate family. And I don't see how we can think that guidance doesn't apply to schools or teachers or families in this district. I realize there are mitigation strategies in place. At least two of those strategies listed on the ASD website, I just don't think are possible right now. There's simply not enough contact, contact tracing capacity to serve classrooms in every school in this district. And I think we know this because the city doesn't have that capacity for contact tracing right now when public schools are closed. I think the other part of the mitigation strategy that really is a red flag for me, a red flag for this board, I would hope, is that social distancing is, is to be done to the largest extent possible. And I think the one thing we're being told is to limit our exposure to others, especially indoors, and not within six feet. And so mitigation strategy that's just kind of do our best on that front is really not risk mitigation at all. I also just wanted to let you know that remote learning is working for my daughter and from what I've seen for her classmates. In our school, teachers are putting in extra effort. My daughter's engaged and learning. And I want to emphasize that the ability to have a connection with her actual Central Middle School teachers and classmates is a huge factor in her learning and her emotional health. I think those connections are really critical right now and I don't want to lose that option. So any situation in which we're moving all kids to the virtual program because they can't risk having their families infected is a poor solution. I think ASD made its point with evidence that the youngest grades should go back to school first, as well as kids with special needs. I'm, I'm not disputing that at all. When that is determined safe, I hope that is the reentry situation that you choose. If there are other kids that remote learning is not working for, maybe ASD could focus on finding space for them to have a quiet place to work and get assistance. I just appreciate all the planning you threw to create that in-school option. And I would like to make sure that you know it's working for our family and our friends' families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the telephone is Speaker Number Four, Meredith Schwartz. Meredith, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Meredith Schwartz and I'm a sophomore at Service High School. Right now, I am scared. I am scared because high schoolers are scheduled to go back to school in an extremely dangerous environment that will put my closest friends and family at risk. I am testifying on behalf of students in my English class, where I asked the class what they thought about returning to school. I am testifying on behalf of the nearly 200 students from all over the district who have signed a petition to keep ASD schools online. I am testifying on behalf of the students who cannot or are too afraid to testify today. Let me tell you about my experience in my discussion-based English class. My peers and I were having a Socratic seminar about Plato's Allegory of the Cave, where prisoners of ignorance are dragged up into the upper world of enlightenment. I asked my classmates to share their thoughts about returning to in-person school in January. Many students shared their stories and all but one spoke against returning to school in person. Some have elderly or otherwise at-risk family members at home. Others have siblings with asthma. Others are just concerned about COVID spread in our community. After hearing these stories, the student in favor of returning to in-person school had changed his mind. The student was enlightened by the difficulties that other students will face if school returns in person when COVID-19 is still a serious threat, just like in Plato's lessons. School board members and Superintendent Bishop, I implore you to take the CDC guidelines seriously and keep high school online until COVID cases are no longer a serious threat. Superintendent Bishop has stated that students who don't want to return to in-person school could enroll in ASD virtual school instead. However, I know from experience that this is not a viable option. Last spring, high schoolers were enrolled in a Florida curriculum that ASD adopted for the emergency situation. Switching to Florida online classes was difficult and frustrating at best and disastrous for many students. This year's online school, taught by our high school teachers, has been wonderful in comparison. I have teachers who develop and teach their own curricula and classmates to discuss it with in small and large groups. Switching to ASD virtual now will be just as disruptive. And not even all of my current classes are offered through the iSchool. Last quarter, I took an ASD virtual course. I was grateful for the teacher who graded my assignments and the opportunity to fill a credit requirement, but I missed learning directly from an experienced teacher. It was a poor substitute. Please keep classes online with their ASD teachers. High schoolers and their families do not need the extra stress of a new transition, either back to in-person or to ASD virtual. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Speaker Number Five, Daniel Kemp. Daniel, are you with us tonight?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you for your time, Board. My name is Daniel Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher, and a parent of ASD schoolchildren. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to memo 62 and urge all members of this board not to support it either. I don't fully understand why this body keeps pushing such dangerous policies, but it needs to stop now. I was going to give a statistical critique of memo 62, but instead I think I'll discuss its deeper underlying message and implications. Memo 62 asks that the district not cancel reopening plans because of inequitable application of public health restrictions that has disproportionately impacted Anchorage's public schoolchildren. This is ridiculous. Almost every word of memo 62 is an insult to those communities who have truly experienced the worst of this COVID pandemic, communities of color, especially hard-hit in Alaska or our indigenous brothers and sisters. This board conducts a land acknowledgement at the beginning of each meeting, stating, "The Board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Denina people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations." I call BS. How can you say you honor our indigenous brothers and sisters while actively putting them in harm's way? This board is known that according to the CDC, over 80% of COVID child deaths are children. I've stated this in the last few board meetings. And here in Alaska, the vast majority of those deaths are Alaska natives. And children aren't the only ones affected by COVID. Adults of color compared to whites are four times more likely to catch COVID, 5.5 times more likely to be hospitalized, and three times more likely to die of complications from COVID-19. Look, I also want to speak about something personal here, okay? In the past week, I've been criticized by certain members of this body for my testimony. And I've even had members of this board asking and calling people I know about me, trying to get me to be more quote-unquote respectful and to watch my tone during testimony. I do not appreciate that and I will not be bullied or intimidated into submission. I have done nothing wrong and I will continue to speak truth to power. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Next up in person is Speaker Number Six, Allison Ariens. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, I testified about the successes of online learning through our ASD high schools and that it should be continued until COVID numbers return to CDC green levels. Some disagreed with me, pointing out that not every high school student is succeeding online. So I reached out to several teachers at East High to learn more. They reported that most of their students are doing well in online classes. Indeed, some are doing better than in-person, but there are some for whom it's not working. The biggest problem for this group, they said, is not online schooling per se. It's that they don't have a quiet place to work. Their homes are so chaotic, they don't feel comfortable turning on their cameras or even their microphones to participate in classes. While these students would be better served in school, they may not want to risk exposure to COVID in a crowded high school classroom. Many live in multi-generational households with family members at high risk from the disease. So here's a solution. Continue to offer online school taught by our ASD teachers and give those students who are struggling the support they need to succeed. Provide them with a socially-distanced, quiet place with headphones and internet to attend these effective online classes taught by our ASD teachers. Talk to our principals about using high school libraries, multipurpose rooms, and large classrooms as socially-distanced sites for online learning with a dedicated adult to supervise. Our principals have great ideas and know their families and students best. Offer bus transportation to school and provide meals to those who need it. The superintendent stated in her email on Friday, the 13th, to ASD families that our middle and high schools are offering in-person tutoring for students struggling with online learning. That's great. Please work with principals to design a more inclusive solution for all secondary students struggling with online school. As the superintendent mentioned tonight already, it's standard practice for high school staff to check in with students who are not passing or regularly attending their classes. Please ask our principals what you can do to help them reach their families. After you know what the families need, survey ASC staff to determine who are willing to return to school. Ask principals at each school what they think would work best for their students and staff, and then listen to them. Help them implement their ideas. The superintendent concluded her email with, "I remain committed to getting all of our students back into school buildings just as soon as possible." Rather than maintaining a narrow focus on getting every student back in school at all costs without a transparent plan for reentry that follows CDC recommendations, let's find the secondary students who need support for ASC-taught online school and give them what they need to succeed, learning online with their regular teachers and classmates safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number seven, Kristin Maves. Kristin, are you with us tonight?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for calling in. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kristin Maves, and I have two students at West High School, a senior and a freshman. And I would like to thank our teachers and school staff for the amazing work that they've done to continue learning during the pandemic. In August, when we signed up for the option that was best for our students and chose ASC online classes, we accepted the metrics that the students should return to school when the 14-day rolling average was less than 29. Fast forward to today, and the seven-day positivity rate on the DHA's website was 11.59. The CDC states that positivity rates above 5% show great community spread. ASC has not amended their metrics and states that other factors beyond the CDC recommendations are just as important. We don't yet have a clear picture of what those factors are and how they impact decisions to open schools. Anchorage is currently over twice the number recommended by the CDC with community transmission. There's been a big push to get all students back to school due to failing grades, which were discussed earlier this evening, and absenteeism. But we have yet to see the numbers on absenteeism. Without statistics on that, we don't know how the students are actually doing as far as attending classes. It's also time to do a survey and see how many families are ready to go back to school in Anchorage. And if there may not be that many families that are comfortable going to school, the numbers in actual classrooms may allow social distancing. Survey needs to be sent not only to elementary but all the way through high school to find out how much space is needed. For those families who do not want to return to in-person school, will it only alternative be ASC virtual? We saw in the spring how that worked, and many of the classes my children are taking are not offered. The metrics for returning to school have changed, so the options should still be the same for our families. Students should have the option to continue with their current program of online learning with their home high school teachers and classmates. Online learning is working. Students are having good interactions with teachers. They're learning to communicate by email and be more responsible for themselves. My kids are doing well and have mastered new skills and responsibility and time management. If ASC virtual is the only option available for those of us that do not want to return to in-person school, that doesn't leave us any other options really but to pull our students from the Anchorage School District and find a different alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number eight, Ryan Maves. Ryan, are you with us tonight? Ryan, if you can hear us, it is star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
My name is Ryan Maves, and I am a freshman at West High. Just going back to school is a big risk towards students like me. We do not know the long-term effects of the virus, but we do know that it could jeopardize some students' futures. For example, I'm an athlete, and I do not want to risk my education for just going back to school. And one of the biggest parts for me of going back to school was socializing with friends. And being able to go back to school, I would not be able to socialize with those. And I've been pretty content with online learning, and I have never noticed how much work I can get done without distractions and being in my own environment. Whereas in a classroom, I would get less work done, and since we're having the social distance, I would not have time to socialize with my friends, which is a big part of school for me. Getting COVID could jeopardize my future because it could affect my lungs and it could affect other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number nine. All right. Speaker number 10 in person, Lisa Toussaint. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. My name is Lisa Toussaint. I'm the mother of a high schooler at Service High. I really appreciate the opportunity to testify. Can you hear it? Oh, oh, can you hear it? Is this better? I'm not good with this thing. Sorry, the mask and I are not necessarily so great together. The school board adopted a plan in August for when students would be returned to the classroom when the 14-day rolling average within the muni was fewer than 29 cases a day. Now with infections surging well beyond that threshold, the district tells us it's applying an entirely different analysis using many different factors. We have yet to see a plan from the district explaining its new analysis and how it's weighing each of its new factors, despite many people, teachers, school staff, and members of the public asking for just that. At the emergency school board meeting a week ago, board member Deana Mitchell asked very explicitly for that information. Allison Arians and I even provided the superintendent a sample risk matrix, identifying the factors we've heard her mention before, with relative rankings assigned to each factor for each age and needs group, as is typical in structured decision-making across many disciplines. Our hope was that it might elucidate the district's missing analysis, but still no actual analysis. As a parent, I want to have confidence in the district's assessment of whether and when it's safe to return my child to school. That can't happen unless I can understand how the district is weighing its criteria so I can evaluate whether the analysis seems sound. I need to understand, for example, whether the district is just giving lip service to the CDC core indicators or whether it actually places real importance on them as opposed to other more subjective factors. Right now, the first core indicator, the number of new cases per 100,000 persons in the last 14 days, has been in the red zone for weeks at a level indicating the highest risk of transmission in schools, with the current number almost seven times the threshold for that category. The second core indicator, percentage of positive tests during the last 14 days, is also in the red zone, again indicating wide community spread and falling in the highest health risk of transmission in schools level. Please help me understand how these public health factors are being weighed in the district's analysis. It's time to eliminate the guesswork. Please provide a plan that weighs all of your factors in a way that the public can assess so productive dialogue can occur. Time is really of the essence. I also ask that the school board and district promptly commit to ASC families that they be allowed to continue the current online program with our ASC teachers for the remainder of the school year if they're not comfortable returning kids to the classroom. This would spare a lot of anxiety for many by providing some measure of certainty and continuity. As you've heard from students and other parents, the online system currently in place has been successful for many students. Valuable learning is occurring, and meaningful student-teacher relationships are being made. Making kids switch in the middle of the school year from a program that's working to ASC virtual would disrupt these routines and relationships and be very detrimental. It wouldn't serve the district's educational mission. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Circling back around to speaker number nine on the telephone, Andrea Gardner. Andrea, are you with us tonight?
I am.
You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Sorry. Hi, I'm here. So, quote, "Alaska TSA member John Richards recommends that the TSA Directs the Transportation Security Administrator that through the remainder of the year, the TSA may not cancel flights because of mechanical issues and weather-related disturbances that have disproportionately impacted Alaska's passengers," unquote. Can you imagine if this were a real statement from the TSA? Would you feel safe flying? Would you board your next flight? How could the airline industry ever rebuild your trust? Yet, this is almost the exact wording from Memo 62 from tonight's school board meeting. Yes, this pandemic is basically the longest layover ever. Yes, we all feel stuck. We're sick of our surroundings and of our snacks. We're exhausted. We want to see our families and celebrate the upcoming holidays, and I desperately want to see my own family in Vermont. I get it. We all get it. I know you get it. Yet the solution here is not to recklessly board the plane regardless of mechanical issues or weather conditions. The solution is not to force pilots, or in this case, teachers, to do their jobs in unsafe conditions and knowingly endanger those in their care. For those families and teachers who want or need to be in person right now, allow them that option. Let's call it ASC in-person, and let's roll it out as soon as possible. Great. Now let's think creatively. There is more than one way to get from point A to point B. If a plane's not an option, then what else can we use? What is the pedagogical equivalent of a train or of a boat? We know that pre-pandemic in-person school was not perfect and was definitely not meeting every child's needs or utilizing every teacher's skill sets. So let's reimagine school. We know the pandemic has exacerbated mental health problems for some people. Yet what is less appreciated is that pre-pandemic schooling was already contributing to such problems. One study from this past year found that students reported feeling less happy while at school than in any other location. Another study found that emergency psychiatric visits more than doubled when school was in session compared with during the summer. The solution here is not to ignore the pandemic and forsake the expertise of epidemiologists for the biased data of non-experts like Brown economist Emily Oster and board that proverbial plane. Instead, let's use this as an opportunity to reimagine the Anchorage School District. I would love to be part of a team of staff, teachers, and families tasked with reinventing schools as we know it. Sign me up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 11, Sarah Osborne. Sarah, are you with us tonight? Sarah, if you can hear us, star six to unmute.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Hi.
You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. I am a Title I middle school educator, the mother of two children, and a concerned citizen. As a district and community, we need to stop setting arbitrary return dates, accept that COVID is going to be with us for a long time, and start asking the right questions. The board should not be tonight asking by what date students can return to school. Instead, the board and administration should be asking how we can make online learning more successful right now while taking actions to make in-person learning as safe as possible for an unknown future return date when case counts allow. The municipality is building its next budget now, and so now is the time for ASC to be clear about what it needs from the muni. The ASC could right now be budgeting for retrofitting individual classrooms with heat recovery ventilation units. The ASC could be ordering the same air scrubbers that Providence and other facilities are using. These are important preventative measures that cannot be accomplished overnight or even by February 1st, but which could make schools safe for an eventual return date when COVID in Anchorage is under control, but only if we act now. ASC could right now be allowing for collab time in and between buildings for teachers to share what is working well. It is true that there are students who are not being reached, who are struggling with distance learning. We should be spending every minute of professional development on reaching them and on improving the equity and outcomes of distance learning. Instead, teachers are scrambling to build dividers made out of PVC and shower curtains, measuring distances between seats, and spending every staff meeting trying to figure out exactly how and where students will eat in silence on X looming date. ASC could right now be looking at the online schedules and attendance data and asking if there's any logical reason why high school Zoom classes begin at 8:00 a.m. Why are we replicating the in-school schedule while we are out of school? We know our youngest students need a parent or other adult to help access their online learning. Why are we not offering sessions on a flexible schedule for working families? These are questions the board and administration could be addressing instead of trying to convince teachers and families that schools will be safe on X date. We need to shift the questions away from what it will be... Sorry. We need to shift the questions away from will it be this month or next month, these students or those students? We need to acknowledge the COVID reality that we're in, online learning, and plan for the COVID reality that we all want. A needs-based MTSS model of return to in-person learning only when the levels of community spread permit it, paired with maximum concrete safety measures. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 12, Barb Clark. Barb, are you with us tonight? Barb, if you can hear us, it'll be star six to unmute. All right, we'll move on to speaker number 13, Emily Erickson. Emily, are you with us tonight?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Emily Erickson. I'm a sophomore at Diamond High School who is currently participating in ASC online learning through Zoom classes. Just like any other high school student, I miss in-person school. I miss being able to walk the hallways with my friends or being able to come to a teacher's classroom during lunch to ask for help with any homework questions I might have. Like most high school students, I can't wait to return to school, but that's only when it's safe. Schools are meant to be a safe place for students. We take annual anonymous surveys where we rate our schools, including how safe we feel there, which shows that safety is a big part of ASC's mission. Returning to school is neither the healthy, safe, or responsible choice. Sending students back conflicts with ASC's core values of student safety. With COVID cases on the rise and with no signs of numbers decreasing, sending students back to school is going to exponentially increase the number of daily cases. Social distancing is not available in a classroom, and teachers have limited sanitation equipment. Following proper CDC guidelines helps limit the exposure rate, but this isn't always available. Keeping the virus contained while school will be difficult, and one exposure can easily spread throughout the school. Infected students can pass the virus on to their siblings, who can expose their classmates, and soon multiple families can be affected. Returning to school may also be more distracting than online school, as everyone, including teachers, will constantly be on edge worried about contracting the virus. Also, staff shouldn't have to put their health at risk in order to maintain their income. Online learning is working, and our teachers are successful in educating our students. As high schoolers, we have the maturity level and responsibility to take charge of our own learning. Therefore, we are responsible to make sure that we are getting the education we need. This new form of learning is pushing students, but we will come back from it even stronger and smarter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number 14, Celeste Hodge-Groden. Celeste, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Bishop. My name is Celeste Hodge-Groden, President and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. My testimony is not so much in opposition of the intent of the agenda, item number 62, but to its lack of clarity or missing information, like metrics reflective of local conditions, science, and potential impact to poor, black, and indigenous populations. As presently worded, item 62 is vague, confusing, and assumes that our poor, black, and indigenous families want and need to return to in-person learning. They do not. Just who and where is this information coming from? Because families within my community and other BIPOC communities aren't in any rush to get COVID-19 and won't be sending their kids back to school until the alarming rise of COVID-19 infections decrease. They want the option to stay online, connected to their home school. So again, where is this information coming from? Why does it keep coming? Why do we continue to come here addressing the same issues? Have you connected directly to the communities affected by item 62, number 62? 62, Number 62? Do not use our community's safety and well-being as a way to bolster ideas and memos. If you cannot show us who you have consulted with to develop Agenda Item 62, then, you know, this is bogus. Agenda Item 62, as evidenced by the fact as presented, fails to answer the following questions. What constitutes the inequitable application of public health restrictions to students? What specific restrictions are presently being imposed on students when compared to other students of our community? What considerations have been given, if any, to students attending school and then returning home where they will come in contact with parents, and in a number of cases grandparents within our communities who are, unfortunately, in the high-risk group? If this agenda is passed in its present form, I assume you, as board members, are accepting the responsibility and accountability should the law of unintended consequences appear on the scene in the form of increased numbers of COVID-19 and the deaths that could follow.
Thank you. I'd like to circle back up to speaker number 12, Barb Clark. Barb, are you with us tonight?
Hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us. We can hear you. You now have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hi, sorry, I don't know why star six didn't work. Good evening. When I signed up to testify tonight, I had planned to speak about setting an arbitrary building opening date, which I think makes no sense. That'd be like saying earthquake, but we're going back into the building at noon whether the earth is still rolling or not. But I saw in a Facebook post that somebody else is going to say just that and say it better. So instead, I'd like to take my three minutes to clear something up. I'm Barb Clark. I work at West, and I am a union boss. We've been hearing so much about us union bosses in public testimony for months. I thought you might like to meet one. I've been a building rep since 2013. I've served on AEA's Board of Directors since, I think, 2015, and on the NEA State Board since 2016, and I'm also a member of the state and local base committees. So as you can see, I'm kind of a big deal. Everyone might not know this, but we, union bosses, claw our way to power by putting our names forward for election for our membership. When we're not confined to Zoom, we hold court, unfolding chairs, and a rented industrial arts room at East High, sometimes 50 or 60 of us, where once a month after school, we feast on cold pizza, lukewarm bottled water, and Robert's rules. We are paid extravagantly. Sometimes we, union bosses, collect seven, eight, 10 thank yous in a year, plus the pizza. You can take home the leftovers. It is a sweet gig. I've learned something, though, listening to public testimony, these many school board meetings. I've come to understand that we, union bosses, have extraordinary power of which I've been completely unaware. Apparently, I can frighten and punish union members, tell them what to do and what to think, and even find out how they vote, since neither I nor my fellow board members nor AEA President Corey Ace pay our members' salaries, hire or fire them, supervise them, or conduct their evaluations. And since I'm pretty sure poll workers won't let me follow them into the booth, I am mystified about exactly how that works. I feel like after all these years, I should know. We have an AEA board election coming up in a few months, and I'm running again. If I don't have any idea how to threaten, silence, or intimidate my colleagues, I'm not sure I'm qualified to ask for their votes. Can anybody explain to me who it is, union bosses, boss, and how I'm supposed to be doing that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number, I don't have 15, 15, Leon James. Leon, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate the members of the school board allowing me to testify. And I appreciate all the work that the school board does and all the staff of the education system during these times. The disproportionate impact of COVID hospitalizations on people of color is undeniable. I would urge the members of the board not to support Memorandum 62 because it does not create an evidence-driven equitable return-to-school framework. I encourage the board to support and work with the municipality's public health teams to do an equitable, independent, professional, and transparent job of addressing the following: to manage school reopening consistent with CDC indicators, thresholds, and best practices as described by reputable medical publications whose work are peer-reviewed; to cooperate with municipality health officials to prioritize decreasing the impact on children and families of color; to cooperate with the municipality to reduce overall levels of community spread and implement the appropriate suppression measures; to explicitly acknowledge the disproportionate health risks for at-risk groups and public communications, including communities of color, in addition to seniors and pre-existing conditions as groups with higher risks; to synchronize with the municipality communication and messaging to the community in order to send a strong, clear message with a clear goal of bringing count levels down, or counts down, to a level where we have schools and businesses that can operate safely. And I thank you for the important work you're doing ensuring the safety of all children and their communities. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next up is speaker number 16, Kerr Moore. Kerr, are you with us tonight?
Yes, hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us. Three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you so much for all the work that you do. I just want to say that before I speak. I just, I can't imagine how difficult it must be to make the decisions around public health that you're faced with. So, I want to say thanks to all the school board members for that. I'm a parent of an ASD middle school student, and I'm here to ask board members not to support Memorandum 62 because it doesn't create an evidence-driven equitable return-to-school framework. This memorandum would limit the superintendent's ability to make evidence-based responses to public health scenarios as the COVID situation in our community evolves. It doesn't acknowledge the disproportionate risks that COVID poses to groups of people like at-risk seniors and those with pre-existing conditions. It places any citizens of the state who rely on Anchorage area medical facilities at risk. It places the Alaska Native population at risk as they're experiencing a very disproportionately high death rate due to COVID. Furthermore, Memorandum 62 doesn't acknowledge that students would be returning to classrooms across ASD with vastly uneven enrollment levels. Memo 62, should it be supported, would disproportionately affect students and staff who are enrolled or work in higher-density classrooms, and their families are more likely to bear the potential burdens of this return. Sending children back to spaces that have vastly unequal breathing space per child is not equitable. Instead of supporting this call for a dataless return-to-school plan, I'd urge the board to serve equity by ensuring that, as part of any future reopening plan, every student who eventually returns to school during our pandemic has equitable breathing room. This, of course, along with an evidence-based approach to timing a school return. A pandemic-resilient learning space requires social distancing at scale and relies on set parameters of risk levels to reintroduce students to classrooms. We don't have either of those right now. Please do not support Memo 62 as it stands. Instead, please rely on an evidence-based metric to guide the superintendent's decisions in a way that is more likely to succeed than a plan that ignores public health facts. Please work with the municipality of Anchorage and other public health officials to accomplish this. And until a vaccine has been widely adopted, please utilize every available ASD space for the eventual phased return of our elementary school students to school in an equitable, pandemic-resilient way. I appreciate your collective concerns for the burdens our students have borne. I also deeply appreciate how much of a challenge online learning may be for some students. But equity does not come by risking lives in its community in exchange for academic success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 17, Carl Jacobs. Carl, are you with us tonight?
I am.
Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Greetings, Anchorage School Board. My name is Carl Jacobs, and I'm testifying today on my own behalf. After reading ASD Memorandum Number 062, I have significant concerns regarding the measure, and would urge each of you not to adopt the course of action as currently proposed. First, I would like to acknowledge and agree with the premise discussed by the offer. Education in Alaska has without question suffered as a result of the pandemic and our collective inability to reduce community spread of COVID-19. Opportunities for face-to-face learning have repeatedly been postponed by factors associated with the high transmission rate of the virus in our community. Our daily case count numbers are now rising by any measure, and staffing shortages have already begun straining the capacity of our healthcare system. Simply put, this is not a problem the Anchorage School District created, nor is it one ASD can solve alone. Instead, this memorandum will prematurely tie the hands of district administration, robbing Superintendent Bishop of the flexibility necessary to respond to conditions on the ground and guidance from community partners and medical experts. In addition, while the memo appears intended to address known education outcome inequities within ASD, we know full well that additional inequities will be created by opening classrooms because of a decision made weeks or months ago and not because it is deemed safe and recommended to do so. Health concerns which disproportionately affect Alaska's BIPOC families, medically fragile children, or educators and first responders must remain a primary concern. Instead, I wholeheartedly support a resolution which urges our local and state-elected officials to join you in making decisions which put our children first so that some semblance of a traditional school day may occur as soon as possible. As board members, your voices carry additional weight and speak for thousands of your friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens. Instead of attempting to resolve our current education crisis alone, please consider using your positions to formally request our municipal and state government leaders to take action and stand with those already willing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the phone, speaker number 18, Reagan Brooks. Reagan, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm here.
We sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I want to echo what others have said, and just thank you all for being here and recognize that it is so difficult, what you're doing. So, thank you for your time and your service and your care, and I know that I really appreciate what you're doing. I am a mother of two ASD students who would love to return to in-person school. I'm the spouse of a frontline medical worker, and I'm a member of the community. I speak tonight to urge members of the board not to support Memorandum 62 regarding the reopening of schools. I know that you want to do the right thing, but I'm concerned that Memo 62 could undermine equity, not support it. As a mother, I want my children to get to enjoy in-person school again. I do not want them engaging in activity, though, that could advance community spread and increase health risks for anyone in our community. I know that staying home comes with risks too, but based on what I've learned, I believe the risks of return to school are greater than the risks of staying home. And public health tells me that if I, as a white woman, allow my children to return to school, my family may be unintentionally increasing risk for families of color in our community. This is not something I want my family to participate in. As a spouse of a frontline medical worker, I know that our systems are stretched thin. I know that my partner recently waited five days for a COVID-19 test that were supposed to take just two days, but one missing and was located after, only after multiple inquiries. I know that my family staying home as much as we can will help reduce COVID transmission rates and make care more available for others who experience heart attacks or car accidents. As a member of our community, I support equity, and I know you all do too. Yes, I do think it's unfair that young people are being held so, are being so responsible in staying out of school while some adults are recklessly engaging in behavior that advances community spread. But the equity issue that ASD needs to address first is not age-related equity issues, but racial and socioeconomic equity issues. This was evidenced by your earlier discussion this evening. You need to be thinking about ways to support all students. And your choices about school reopening affect both academic and health-related racial and socioeconomic equity issues. Please remember this. If all families, regardless of race, intend to send students back to school at the same rate, public health data suggests that students, that families of color will face disproportionately high rates of COVID infections, hospitalizations, and even deaths. If families don't want to send children back to in-person school, they will have to enroll in ASD virtual programs that many have noted is severely flawed and does not support students as well as online learning, even if that learning is over Zoom. How is that an equitable choice? Recently, an op-ed writer in the ADN cited a Yale study in her argument that our schools should be reopened. I was impressed. I went and looked into the article, and what I learned was this. This is quoting from Yale's own press release about the article. Quote, "The study's authors cautioned that their findings do not necessarily apply to teachers who work in schools or other settings." They also quote, "Found that Black Lutino and Native American childcare providers were more likely to test positive for COVID-19 and be hospitalized for it."
Reagan, I'm so sorry. The three minutes is up.
That's okay. That's okay. I'm pretty much at the end.
Thank you so much.
Please don't send our children back to school. Thank you.
And our last speaker on the list is speaker number 19, Soran Worth. Soran, are you with us tonight?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Soran Worth. I'm a language arts teacher at Diamond. And I want to add my, to the brave voices of the young, of young people tonight, to share 16 quotes from ninth graders on how the pandemic has shaped their lives. I promised I'd share, and I think their words are instructive. One, "The overwhelming amount of schoolwork I had to do at the end of eighth grade was like a mountain about to crash into me. Two, the pandemic has caused so much pain for other families. The stores are rocking at prices even when people are losing their jobs from this. Three, online schooling has made me more happy since I can think to myself for a long time and reflect on actions. I feel like I never really think enough while in school. Four, it's overall very stressful. Five, my personality has changed. My outlook on life has changed. My mental health has changed. My family has changed. Six, online school is the hardest time I've struggled with school. Seven, people actually like to go outside and do fun things, and it doesn't always have to be outside in general, so please wear your mask." That's all counts. Eight, "Being bored during the pandemic is the number one thing I'm good at at this point in time." Nine, "Now I actually have time to work out and burn the pandemic pounds. Staying in all day most of the time isn't too bad. In the pandemic, I learned a lot about myself. For starters, I love pad thai." Ten, "I think my dogs have been very happy during this pandemic because I'm home with them. They probably have no idea what's going on in this room. They're just thinking about food, legs on tummy, and long walks. I think they wonder who's talking to me on the computer or why he's on the computer half the day." Eleven, "I think America isn't taking COVID-19 seriously. The United States has the highest COVID rates in the world." Twelve, "Watching paint dry seems more fun than COVID." Thirteen, "I just hate it, and I know hate is a strong word, but I'm allowed to write what I want about the pandemic, so there you have it. Overall, COVID-19 sucks." That's followed by eight exclamation points. Fourteen, "I'm in the best shape I am in my life right now because I'm passing time by physical exercise. I've, I've, I also have been getting into mental health and learning about what pro athletes do to have consistency in their gameplay. Of course, I get plenty of screen time and stuff my face with food, so I'm completely healthy. But I'm just taking the pandemic one day at a time." Fifteen, "The pandemic has given me the opportunity to learn in peace." And finally, sixteen, "To be honest, I think the virus is kind of a learning curve for everyone." There you have it. And I want to add my name to the chorus of voices opposed to Memorandum 62. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. At this time, that concludes our public testimony. I always invite board members and community members to go out and read the written public testimony, and I believe there'll be a couple more that are added tonight, but it will be out there for everybody to read. Next up on the agenda is our superintendent report, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Deana Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And as shared before, the first thing we want to do, we're going to talk about the restart, health services, safety protocols, and just continued work. And I'll also just share some pieces of information in regard to public testimony. I know that we don't respond, but I just want to appoint folks in the place to get some answers if there's still some confusion. So, start with restart and decision-making, but... So, start with restart and decision-making, but we always, in our ASD tradition, start with good things. And I wanted to share with you that there's some good things right in front of us. If we can go to the next slide, please. I'll just do it from here. I would like to share that we have some boardsmanship awards that were given by the Alaska Association of School Boards for our board members, and they really signify the work that board members are doing in support of educating themselves, whether it's in webinars or the boards, you know, the conferences, things like that, and taking classes. So, they have three different levels of boardsmanship awards, and we have members that receive those. So, Andy Hulliman, let's give him a round of applause for basic boardmanship. He's been awarded that. And we have Deana Mitchell, also basic boardsmanship award, and this is demonstrating 30 points or 30 hours of work that they've put into their self-education in conjunction with this. And as well, Margot Bellamy, the basic boardsmanship award. So, there you go. And we have two more members. Elisa Michaelis, you are here in person, so I can transfer this to you. Here is your certificate, and that increases the time amount to 70, 70 points for your hours that you put into yourself and education and being a better board member and understanding all that goes into that, which is quite a lot, from legal issues and policy issues and whatnot. And then Member Marsette also is in the experienced boardmanship award with 70 hours of work towards your boardsmanship. So, congratulations, and wanted to share that that was sent to me by the executive director, and so I wanted to present it to you in front of really your peers, your community, so that they know the work that you're doing, you know, the boardsmanship work is there. And of course, it's in regard to new board members and, you know, all kinds of stuff. So, you can probably share the classes you've been in, but just wanted to share that. And back to just working through decision-making points, and before we move on, I do want to share something. When I presented the data, I continued to use the word statistical significance, and I didn't want to use that in the term of kind of a colloquial term in regard to just, you know, thinking that it was nothing. I think any F, as the person who testified, is one too many failures, too many. I was speaking in terms of the psychometrics of running like a T-test on data to demonstrate. What you look for is, is the change in data having to do with the issue at hand of what you're looking at, a change over time, and what we're looking at is pre-pandemic/pandemic and what's happening? So, you want to look, and while most data can't point to this happened to this, that would be a one-to-one correlation, most things have a relationship. So, you're looking at a relationship, and we can run those, but when we looked just briefly, the significance in some of those weren't as much as others. They were in a lot of our student groups that we already understand are behind. So, it has just created that greater divide, is what I mean. So, I don't want to share that it's insignificant. That certainly was not the message. But wanted to just, when you work with data all the time, you just put those things out there so that you, you know, folks understand what you're talking about. And we'll find a lot of the studies, even about, you'll hear about COVID. We don't have enough information, but this is what we know so far. So, we use the best information that we have, and that's what we're going to talk about today. In regard to the CDC guidelines, I want the board and the public and everyone to know that the terms "six foot when feasible," "six foot as much as possible," directly come from the CDC guidelines for schools. So, if you get on the CDC website and you look under schools, I shared them with the board before, I want to share them with the public, that when it says, "Well, we're not following the CDC," those actually are the CDC guidelines. So, those are the verbiage right from their charts into ours. So, wanted to share that, that we didn't, you know, doctor those names or anything to be like sneaky or tricky. They're actually part of the CDC guidelines. Another something is just when we talk about children, and it's in the training, what we ask children when they're eating. Part of what we've learned is that children should not scream and holler and yell and things like that, that children are allowed to eat and talk. And so, that is not, the premise that kids have to remain silent when they're eating is not something that is in our training and in our plans, that certainly we expect. We are distancing kids at six foot for eating or having a barrier, but they may converse in a, sometimes we call those a very soft voice, and you might know, we used to call them as a teacher, a two-finger voice. If you put your fingers on your vocal cords, if you talk loudly, you feel them move. If you talk softly with your two fingers, you can't feel your vocal cords, so you want a two-finger sound, okay? And that's how you teach kids. Also, looking at data, I wanted to share that last Monday, we shared some data in regard to, or the prior board meeting, and there was someone that says, "Where is this coming from?" We actually did survey K-2 parents in our schools, and at the time, only about a little over half of the surveys are back. We still are calling now, and we have about 65%. And of those 65%, those in title schools, it's about 81% of parents said it closed last week, last Friday. So, 81% of parents at this time of the responses we have, and we have about 7,000 now, in non-title want, you know, desire, those that responded in title schools, about 70%. So, it is a difference, but we still did have interest in returning face-to-face from, you know, folks that go into different schools. So, I wanted that to be known, and also, part of our reading programs make up people of color in our schools already in Muldoon and some others that shared. Once they understand, again, we've had to really change our communication with our families. Surveys isn't something that they want to respond to, but again, they respond to principals. So, the idea that the guidelines at the district guide things, set those standards, taken from the CDC, best practices in other districts, and then we overlay them on schools. And so, schools being at different levels is just natural, where I can see a middle and high school saying, "I don't know about this, and I don't know how to do this, and I don't know," whereas, because they're not through that process of really digging down deep with their, their plans, because we hadn't set to open up specifically for today. Elementarys are further along, so have a greater understanding of all those different pieces. And it takes time. We want to answer staff and parents and students' questions about the preparation, but again, they are nuanced according to space and place. The municipality we work with weekly, we had, this was before the numbers just went up over the last couple of weeks, but we had a very public meeting with the municipality. The assembly had called us to it, wanted to report. The municipality saw the plans, supported the plans, the epidemiologists worked with us, and so those are favorable. We continue to work with them in, in working with them. And the understanding about hospital beds came about because of staffing, and wanted to share that we understand that there is space in the, you know, it's in that middle section, the hospital capacity. It is staffing that our hospitals are struggling with, and we did receive a call last weekend when my decision was forwarded out to our families that they really had to send some of their medical professionals to Bethel, and so they were sure. They didn't think that while they had the beds, they couldn't staff the beds, which would, really, the outcome would be the same, that we couldn't take care of the people who needed to be taken care of. Hence, the decision was made. So, I wanted to just clarify some of those, you know, idiosyncrasies and just different things that are, well, it mattered because of this. And that's what makes this so really difficult to work through. And my colleague, I shared, and New York is actually, I mean, that is a place that has shown great success in the mitigation of their virus. And Richard Caranza, I was on the phone with him the other day in New York, and he really shared that his city, just, I mean, if you juxtapose this on another issue, does have a straight cutoff, which Mayor de Blasio put a 3% that our number, whereas the governor put a 9%. The school, the outside community is upwards of 3. Internally to the schools, they're 100th of a 100th percent or something like that. That's where they were last Friday when I spoke to him. So, he just, it's kind of funny. He said, "Schools are taking care of what we need to take care of," and I believe de Blasio over the weekend really shared that, like, "Hey, the community, you need to get behind us because we are doing it in here. We're mitigating that risk." And so, this isn't simply an Anchorage issue. This is an issue across the country of when, you know, you pick a cutoff, what do you do? And that's why this is such a complex issue, and even places that picked a number are adjusting. And so, the CDC has had given multiple indicators, and a lot of them are around the medical and ability to respond to the virus. The other ones, after Monday, asking the question, Member Mitchell, I shared with her that on the website on Tuesday, we put up those secondary indicators that are just always with us all the time, and they range, I can go to them after I have them listed, but they, they range from, you know, educational ones to economic ones to child abuse, like all these things we think about when we know what are schools about and what should schools do. And, you know, I've heard from people who oversee court cases in regard to violence, and they're frightened about what's happening with children. And so, I just, it is so many different things. But as you know, we are not in school right now because of the virus. So, our decisions are inclusive of many factors, social, emotional, educational, health screening, as well as, these are some of the ones that are most difficult to put a matrix. And I just, for me, all of the things that we do for children, we, like, I default to school, and then we step back when we understand what happens. But I want to share that honestly, the, while we work with the community, the pushback has not necessarily changed that much from August, September, October, November, December, internally. That, what has changed is the massive increase in case counts and the ability for the medical profession to respond. So, with that, just going back, I want to share with the board and publicly, I just, I know that those questions are what is out there, and there's people internally, externally, all around the situation. And so, what do I do? I say, "Let's go back to the information as the virus and as the knowledge has expanded." When we made our decision in, we picked a matrix. And really, I remember, Member Donnelly challenging us and saying, "That was not made for this reason." But that's what, you know, every, everyone, we want to go back to. But even the CDC came out with its matrix. That's very different than that for, you know, that's for senior homes, made by the DHSS off of guidelines. The CDC has different guidelines for schools. But the World Health Organization just shares their early data in schools, and so about where's the science, where's the science? In my letter Friday, I really tried to say, you know, we're still in the midst of this, but I want to share the science. I want to share that we read and pay attention. Certainly, in July, ASD was one of the first that said, "Oh, we'll all wear masks," and that was the biggest pushback on me. That was the biggest argument. How could you be terrible wearing, having people wear masks? Since then, our knowledge about masks has grown, not only just recently. It used to be to protect others, and now the CDC is actually, it helps you too. And so, these are growth in science. We respond to that. That's appropriate. We're an educational institution that should respond to new knowledge. And I do want to share that the knowledge is probably going to change even again, because the more you know, the more you know. And generally around a disease, they start publishing after 10 years, but COVID has made it very impossible to do that. We need to respond and use the best knowledge at the time. I shared, you know, just what the Washington Post shared, which is also what our mayor has shared, what the CDC has shared, is that gatherings even around where they used to show significant viral spread in bars and things like that are not the viral, the new viral spread. It really is happening in our homes because we're understanding that we are a social being, we like to be around people, and we generally don't wear masks with our friends in our home. Schools would wear masks. Schools have mitigation. Schools are utilizing those safety things. Hence, I shared that there is evidence now where people are saying, "Whoa, maybe schools and those routines actually help children and then would help families." I just want to provide a little bit of health services update, and this is in regard to testing and what we can do. Again, ASD, in our city, we are seeing large, you know, a large amount of cases and an inability for staffing to really be stabilized. And so, we're keeping a look on that. But in the CDC guidelines, there wasn't stabilization of staffing. That's something new that we learned in talking, and it's really evidenced around the country, not just in Anchorage. When there's high viral spread, people in organizations do things socially. In speaking with Providence, it was not spread by taking care of patients who were there every day because they trust the PPE, they wear the PPE in operating. It's just that their staff had to cover somewhere else, and consequently, a large number of staff have community or close contact, and so they don't have the virus, but they're close contacts of people who do. And so, you know, that makes it difficult. So, that's another indicator. And so, every moment that we learn something, we include that in our decision-making. And I wish it was, you can really couple, it's an art and a science of making decisions, which is really what happens in our classrooms every day, the art and science of teaching. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Patronas, our Director of Nursing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, Alaska is expected to get the first batch of COVID vaccines at some time in December. Both Pfizer and Moderna are in the final phases of clinical trials, and the next step will be FDA approval. Once the vaccine does arrive, the key thing to know is that the brands are not interchangeable. They're both two-dose vaccines. However, the Pfizer vaccine is 28 days from the first dose, and the Moderna is a 21-day wait until the second dose. The Phase 1A for Alaska is going to only be, the healthcare workers and first responders will get the first batch of vaccine, and then they will determine from there when it will be available to the general public, but they're going to do it in a phased system. Phase 2 will likely be people in long-term care facilities and other high-risk individuals. Even though the both brands are doing clinical trials on children 12 and up, they do not believe that it'll be approved for anyone under the age of 18, at least in the first batch. And with that, the state is not going to make it a required vaccination for anyone for the state. So, a lot of news is coming out about that as we learn more, but when the FDA gets their approval and then we get the emergency use authorization, I'll have more information. I am happy to say that last week, we did get two Abbott ID Now PCR rapid test machines for the district. They do belong to FEMA, but they have loaned them to us for now, and then we should be getting more in the next batch that comes from the state. This first machine will go to Baxter Elementary. They do have the reading tutoring program going on there. And then the other one will be at the Ed Center so that nurses can check it out as needed, because it is a very small device and can be moved around from school to school once those nurses at the site are trained. We've also had Visit Health do mobile sites. They started last week, and they've had a good turnout. These are mobile walk-up sites, not drive-through, because they are targeted for those individuals that live in those communities and can walk to those sites. But they do take people that drive up, you just have to park and get out. The first couple of sites went really well. They started off slow, but as people in the community were aware they were there, they got busier, and they are open for a 12-hour timeframe, so it gives a lot of individuals time to get tested. So, the key thing to know is get tested, because if you don't get tested, we can't find the virus, and I think this is super helpful for all of our families in ASD. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. And I do want to share too that, to our public, we have received quite a bit of feedback in regard to sports. And initially, and actually even some students have testified that, you know, "I want to stay online, but I'm okay socially because I get to go to my sport." And knowing that football and volleyball and all those others were actually more close contact at the time without masks, now... Now, finishing the season, we did mask students for volleyball and gymnastics and swimming and riflery, swimming everything, you know, but the pool, obviously. And so in following, actually, ASHA had made that a choice. ASD chose, let's mask them. But for pretty much the fall, they were engaged, you know, with each other together. And we had to make some calls about quarantining and this and that. But that does come to mind. I, in having such pushback in August, when we were going to start, and then in September, really the goal was to service kids because I knew kids need an outlet, kids are social, they need to be together. And I thought that having sports would be a way to demonstrate, serve kids, but also demonstrate the efficacy of our protocols. And I believe that it was a success. We addressed, you know, issues with cases when they happened. We mitigated, we had to shut them, things down. But of the four teams in volleyball that we shut down, you know, 16 stayed open. And so that allowed other sports to continue, you know, whether it was for the 14-day quarantine. We just didn't want to take any risks. So we did that. In thinking about that, I, you know, it does occur to me that we, it might seem as though we prioritize that. And I believed that not only was that servicing kids, but it could move us to a better place of understanding. And it hasn't because we like what we like here, but not here and pick and choose. So I take responsibility for that in really wanting to, I believe in co-curriculars, I believe in sports, I believe they're vital in a school system for educating youth. They do serve to teach the soft skills that sometimes sitting in a math class doesn't and others speaking as a math teacher. And, but it bothers me every evening that we could move, you know, one way, but not another to service kids. So the comment in regard to students with IEPs or other students in high need, that resonates with me in making that decision prior to this time. Because we also hear in the testimony that from kids that I liked playing sports. I mean, they did feel that connection there. And I wish that connection could have been made with other kids in some fashion if we couldn't be in school. But the safety protocols continue. This holdoff is giving us time to really hone in on our personal protection equipment. We shared our tracking mechanism, finding the equipment, where is it? Again, a lot of the PPE was not sent to the classroom immediately. It was, you know, put in different places to be dispersed. We're accounting for all that. And then as new PP comes available, there's new wishes on, you know, open-faced masks or shields. So we're trying to get those in stock, especially for specific teachers working with kids and speech and different IEPs. But this gives us an opportunity to really hone that in. And I'm just going to just share some of the comment is, you know, to why should we spend our time making this? And honestly, we wanted to work with schools to provide, what is it that you need? These are crazy, you know, trapezoid or whatever tables. And then some are desks. We don't have all the same. So teachers needed to give input about what they'd like. And frankly, some teachers built these in the summer, just knowing things. I talked to, I went to three elementary schools last week and it's just different, the differences. But when we see them, we're like, ah, that was a great idea. So then we try to make them for other schools. But here's just some, you know, different things that they're doing to set up according to a standard, you know, it's standardized and then it's customized. It is, time is spent measuring because these are personal classrooms. The support is there. We want people to understand their supported. This was a really interesting one. This teacher only has, I believe she said about 16 kids coming back and she could space them. And then they don't eat lunch there. They, you know, have another area to eat lunch and come back, but they're kindergarten anyway and they don't sit or any one spot more than 10 minutes anyway because they're always moving. And so she and her kindergarten aide have it worked out that they don't need to share anything else, that everything is built in these tubs. And what she's done is created all these little items and tubs right now that they have at home, so they're going to be familiar with them. And so really the idea that this teacher wanted this, another teacher wanted something else, we're working with how the teachers already work. Standardizing, saying this is how you're going to sit in a desk and this is the kind of thing you're going to use is really very far away, you know, from what we generally do. I have shared with principals, shared on Tuesday, that if it, or Friday in my meeting, if principals need the district to come around and sit with their teams to help create some of these, we absolutely can. We will put all the supports there. But what we provided is the knowledge and then the work with your team, but we can make some decisions. In understanding that the whole wall dividers were, that they could be moved rather than just stayed on a desk were more desirable so that when kids sit up, you know, last weekend, they spent, you know, we shared these before, you know, that we made 150 get over a weekend, went and bought the stuff, made them, dispersed them. Another is going to be done this weekend. So I want to let you know that although we're on a halt, we continue to make these. And when we share them with principals, we say, here they are, what would you like? But again, it's really, the principals are working with their teachers. When we can't get to a place, we want to come in and, you know, how can we help you? What do we do? And support it all the way. So just wanted to provide a mind's eye that it does look different, it is creative and the work continues. With that, that concludes my report. Just other than sharing, we continue to increase small programs. We are looking at a phased-in approach of levels where staff would come back, work, and then students, a phased-in approach. They're standardized, the plans are succinct, they're posted on the website. If parents say, I want to understand more, what is the district doing? Please look at your school's site. We are reviewing those. They go through a review process of three different people that are in charge of, whether it's the safety protocols, the instructional protocols, are working with principals to get them approved. Secondaries were due last Friday. Kirsten Johnson and her team are doing walkthroughs, checking off, saying, what is it else that you, what are other procedures that you're struggling with? And then we go places that have had school open to troubleshoot. What does this look like? And so we're not working in our own vacuum, where it is a two-way street, it is a problem solving. In fact, Friday, no, 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 it was Veterans Day. I visited a school and teachers were there working and it wasn't a Zoom time, but they were, they were there doing their in-service. And one of the comments made was, it was really, really hard to think of all this. It was just so hard. But I've never had to critically think like I have. And now we're, basically she talked about being proud of what they've come up with at their school. But again, I walked, one school came up with lots of things. I walked in a first grade, second grade, third, all the way. And they were all a little bit different according to the routines that they had established already. So I want to share that as your superintendent, I am wrapping around support, wrapping around the knowledge, the expertise, funding, but it really does take us all, and I want to meet teachers where they are. And some teachers, you know, choose different because of the way they work with kids. And I want to be allowed to say that's okay because I don't think schools aren't necessarily rigid places and we need to work with our staff how they'd like. With that, now it's really ending. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Were there any board members that had any questions on the superintendent report? Board Member Mitchell?
I'm going to mute myself. Dr. Bishop, you mentioned six feet of distance at, when the kids eat lunch. That is something that I did not see in my schools. Is that something that's new?
No, it's either six foot or with a barrier if they choose to eat in classrooms. But a lot of classrooms, and we can have Dan Barker, of the classrooms and the schools that I visited, they did have six foot because they were having half the kids eat in certain classrooms or in another side and then the other half eating. So even if it was in the same classroom, they spaced out who goes to recess and who doesn't. And that is what was occurring in the kindergarten. Another school that I went to, they have, actually Huffman as well, shared in Inlet View, they actually have a kind of a hub center that a few kids from each classroom to make the six feet go to that. And so they get to mix each week and create a new class, but they stay in their section. So schools that cannot do that, we're continuing to work with them. Others in a kindergarten class, of course, we saw a barrier in between them that when they eat, they, if they can't, they were about four foot apart, they had that barrier in between them. So if Dan Barker continues to work with schools to troubleshoot that.
Thank you. Can I ask another question?
One more?
So there is some new research about spread in schools. And I'm assuming that you guys have, that Jen and everybody is kind of taking a look at all of that. Is that informing any of our approaches or do you feel like what we're doing is, addresses all of that?
Could you repeat that again? What?
So there are some new, there's new information coming out and new knowledge of how kids are spreading COVID. And I'm assuming that, you know, the health folks are staying on top of that. I was wondering if that is, hopefully that's informing our approach. I was wondering if there's anything that we feel that we need to change based on some of these things that have just come out in the past week or two.
Absolutely. And just continuing to use the spacing, keeping masks on and really the hand washing, the protocols. So what we have learned is, you know, kids do have COVID and a lot of them are asymptomatic. And that's how it is understandable that it could spread. But trusting in the PPE and the procedures is constantly just honing in on those and doing what we can.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. My question, I have a, probably a, maybe I'll make them all questions, just two, just two. So the primary indicators, I'm assuming are the medical health, public health indicators. Secondary indicators are SEL, health, health screenings that kids are missing, food insecurities. But my questions really are around the community factors. How, what, have we partnered or engaged with other groups? I know we're doing, we have the Volunteers of America. What else have we, what other partnerships or community outreach have we done or could we do to help us mitigate these factors?
Well, we are planning on some public service announcements. We communicate, of course, with our stakeholders, share information at chambers and rotaries about safety and what we need to do to get schools back. Certainly with partnerships within our own school, similar to Volunteers of America. We have Campfire, YMCA, several other daycares that are very specific to different parts of town that I can't remember their names right offhand. So in working with children that we both take care of, if that is, if that's what you mean, the mutual interest?
Yeah, that, it just seems to me that we, that somehow we, we need to, we might, I don't know. I just think that it can't just be up to us, ASD, to mitigate the spread. It can't be. It has to be, but maybe it might need to be us to start some kind of campaign or some kind of, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. But we got to do, I just think we have to do more. If we're going to get kids back in school and get them back safely, I just think we are going to have to engage with our, not just our families, but our community in ways that maybe we just, we might need to be more aggressive with that.
I would absolutely love that support. That's excellent. I think our mayor, Austin Quinn-Davison, was excellent in her ability to say, we need to do these things to keep businesses open. The governor said the same thing when questioned about, you know, schools too, you know, consider us, you know, it's not just, schools do affect the economics. And so we know when parents can't go to work, that that's also troublesome. So our elected officials have supported us in that area as well. When the information came out, Dr. Zink and Dr. Johnson were right on a call with all the superintendents and explaining, you know, that this is really meant to keep us open. The manner in which, I think, surprised the entire state. The alert went out when we asked about that. It was specifically mentioned that it's to get people's attention. It was said that way deliberately to get people's attention that we need to start getting serious about this. So I believe those attempts were in similar line to what you're asking in finding that out because it was alarming, you know, obviously, to see that. And when we pushed to ask, you know, what's happening, that was it. To get people's attention was the primary reason. Certainly did that, now we just all need to follow through, right? But I would, I absolutely agree with you, Member Bellamy. It's really bigger than us.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry. Are ready or are we working on those? I know we have our airplane arms, we have our training videos, we have, we have our 742 help. Do we, so anyway, when they're available or if I've missed them, just let me know where they are because I will commit to getting that information out. Or helping to.
Thank you. My question, I have my hand up next in the queue, but I got two more behind me too, was probably for Jen Patronas, if she had a quick minute. I had two questions regarding the vaccine. The first one is, and I'm using a hypothetical number, I recognize that. So if they say that we get 10,000 vaccines, does that mean 10,000 people or does that mean 5,000 people, but it counts for both doses?
To the Board President, right now Pfizer is going to send out 20 million vaccines to the United States and Moderna has 15 million. So to answer your question more specifically, if we get 10,000 doses, then they would give out the first dose of 10,000 because they should be getting another shipment in because it's going to come in batches because they can only make them so fast. So it would be 10,000 people, but just knowing that they ordered enough for all first-line healthcare workers and first responders for the first phase of 1A.
Okay, thank you. And which leads me into my next question is, you talked about first responders, then you talked about senior citizens, I believe, being in maybe group two. Where do teachers fall? Do we know that?
I do not know the answer to that. That is in the discussion in every state meeting when they talk about it. But I think that right now their main focus is just making sure they get all healthcare workers, whether volunteered, volunteer workers or salaried or paid workers first, and then police officers and all the other first responders, and then they're going to tackle what's going to come next. I'm just making the assumption based off the conversation that the next phase, which would be either 1B or 2, would include long-term care facilities in those, that population because that has been part of the discussion as well because they've been the most affected. So I don't have a clear answer on that yet.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up in the queue is Board Member Marsette.
So I agree with Ms. Bellamy, and this is something I have been talking about. And I'm sorry, but the things that our state and our local government have done so far are not sufficient. Three enforcers, what are they going to do? I go into Fred Meyer's and they tell me that they can't force someone to leave, they can't force them to put on their mask. So I think until our assembly, our state has consequences for those businesses that have the mandates posted on their doors and their windows, that to me, the people that are already doing it are doing it. It's the ones that are not. And because people choose not to enforce it for whatever reason, we as a state and local government, I'm not saying we don't want to shut businesses down, but to me, it says we're not putting education first because we're still letting, we're putting all the onus on the school district to make sure that we're doing it right, but we're not putting any onus on the businesses to make sure that they're doing their part. And I'm not saying all businesses, but if you walk into a lot of our stores, you will see people not wearing their mask correctly, not wearing masks at all. And these aren't people that have waivers or whatever. These are healthy people. And, you know, it's not my job to enforce it, although I have said something sometimes. It's my job to ask the managers why are they not doing it? But I just feel like our state, our local government as a whole, has put all the onus on the school district to get kids back into school. And everybody's pointing fingers at us as to what are we gonna do to make it safe? Yet nobody is holding the rest of this community responsible for what they need to do and putting education first. And my priority is to get kids back in school. And we can't do it until our local government and our state government enforces what needs to happen. Just like in New York, they had, they just shut down all their schools. And they shut them down and left all the restaurants and bars open, even though school, the schools in New York have the lowest transmission rate over businesses. And so, you know, even globally, just kids are just not first. Education's not first. And it's really kind of sad to say that we can't do what we need to do to be able to get kids back in school.
Thank you. Next up is Member Mitchell.
Thank you. And I, I agree with that. The question is how to get there. Dr. Bishop, I really appreciate you preaching this message to the chambers of commerce and rotaries. And I know the rest of us all preach it wherever we go. I certainly do in my communities and in my community councils and wherever I am. And I have to say, I really am limiting, obviously, where I go. I don't go out very often, but I did have to get a key made a couple of days ago. And I went into Home Depot and they had big signs on the doors. And I went and got my key made, was heading out, and there were two people in the store without masks on, and they were young, healthy people. It's difficult to, a lot of people don't take this seriously. And I agree that it really should not be our job. I'm really, really happy to hear that there are public service announcements. I had not heard that. And I would love to see those as well. Are they TV ads? Are they radio ads? Are they both? And do you know if they're running yet?
They're in planning now.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much. That's great to hear, because somehow we need to come up. And I'm sure there are agencies here in town who would do that pro bono. That's probably who you've reached out to. But, you know, something, you know, really persuasive for those, I'm sure they know a profile of the, of the type of person who isn't going to wear an mask. And, you know, so we have to figure out what that hook is and, and persuade them. So, because we know with all the studies that we will not be able to have, schools cannot open effectively when community transmittal is high. And, you know, Korea got it down to less than 24 cases per million people. And in that case, they started seeing schools having issues. When they had one case per million, that was when they really had success with, with schools opening. So we know that having really low community transmittal rates is going to be essential to us to be able to, you know, successfully open our schools. So I really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. Ms. Patronas, I just had a question about that vaccine for like the healthcare workers. What's the anticipated outcome of that? Are we going to see the staffing issue improve? Or is it more of a, you know, very important protective element? But maybe we won't see any change to staffing, having more, you know, availability?
To the Board President to Member Hildy, the outcome is to the protective measure, so that healthcare workers are no longer getting sick and becoming symptomatic. And then therefore, not only just missing work, but just the health aspects of it. Because they are the ones that are being the most exposed, especially the first responders like the policemen and the fire department.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any more hands up in the queue, so we're gonna go ahead and keep moving on. Next up is our consent agenda. And I will have Ms. Margot go ahead and kick it off with a reminder to all board members that we will be doing a roll call vote after each item as we go.
Alrighty. I move to approve the consent agenda. ASD memorandum 043, the personnel report, and our executive session minutes for September 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote. Member Vekalas. Yes. Member Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
And Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Thank you for that. And while it's coming up on the screen, the consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up, we are on to our action items. Just to confirm with our Board Secretary that we have nobody signed up for any public testimony for any of our action items? That is correct. There's no one signed up for action item testimony. Thank you. And Member Bellamy, if you could please kick us off with item number two.
Yes. I move to approve ASD memorandum 034 and authorize the superintendent to utilize the designed build project delivery method for the Betty Davis East Anchorage High School pool fire sprinkler installation project. Additionally, the administration recommends that the school board authorize the superintendent to allocate $800,000 from available 2018 bond proposition to roof projects to support full funding of the Betty Davis East Anchorage High School pool fire sprinkler installation project.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum number 034? Seeing done. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote. Member Donley.
Had to unmute my microphone. Yes.
Thank you. Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
President Vekalas.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
ASD memorandum 034 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 046 and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the Government Hill Elementary School Roof Replacement to Iclutna Construction and Maintenance LLC for a total award amount of $2,397,203.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 046? Seeing done. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote. Member Marsette.
Yes, yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
President Vekalas.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Thank you. ASD memorandum 046 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 047, the attached Anchorage School District Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan Project, Tables 1 and 2, for July 1st, 2021 to July 30th, 2027.
Thank you. Are there any board members that have any questions on ASD memorandum 047?
Yes.
Member Marsette.
So my concern with this and looking at it, and I know, I guess I want to know is this, I know we're not voting on a bond or anything this year, but even next year, looking at our budget, looking at possibly tax increases for our community. I'm just wondering if, and I know I won't be here next year, but I would really like the board to consider rethinking this next year based on what our, our budget's gonna look like as we are looking at it now for next, next school year, when this, when we propose our second two-year bond. And because we don't have the demographics of where student, you know, what schools have lost students. I mean, we know that. But I mean, until we do that analysis of where our population is, I think it's hard to move forward right now with any other school replacements or updates or anything else. I think we need to focus on some of that deferred maintenance that we, we always allocate some money for, or try to get roofs or something like that done, because we're about 780 million in this report behind. And not that I'm saying we shouldn't do it, but I, I really hope, given the economics for next year and the funding, that I think we will be short. I think we really need to think about whether the community will support us in doing this until we have better numbers.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the report of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, they point out that the, this proposal is drifting away from the board's previous long-running policy about trying to limit new bonds to the amount of debt being actually retired. The bond proposal in years two is about 6% over the debt being retired. But the problem really develops in years two and three going out, where the debt in year four will be 37% over the debt retired. And that means tax increases, significant tax increases. And even worse, in year six, 67% over the corresponding two years of debt retirement. I'm very concerned about that. I agree with Member Marsette. We need to rethink this six-year plan. We need to rethink it based on what our current school population is and what our current community population is. It's currently trending downward. We've lost a significant number of students. We're gonna have a lot more space available in existing schools. And I don't think it's gonna meet favorable reception by the public to ask them to put up $35 million or whatever it is for one new elementary school, when we've got all this backlog of essential deferred maintenance in so many schools. I continue to believe, and, and I absolutely think I'm right about this, that if the Inlet View project had been standalone, as I recommended to this board and, and moved for this board, that it would not have passed during the last bond proposition. I voted for the bonds because the earthquake money was there, and that was essential to our neighborhoods and our schools and our community. I did not support the Inlet View project. And I think there are thousands and thousands of people in Anchorage agreed with me on that. It should not have been included with the earthquake money. That should have been a standalone proposition. And people were faced with a Hobson's choice, a bad choice, of voting against needed earthquake money or, or, and going along and, or having to put up with the Inlet View project. The testimony at that time on Inlet View was from the community itself. They supported a remodel, not a complete tear-down and rebuild of that school. I think that problem's gonna exasperate and get really worse next year. Well, if we go back out, or two years, we can go back out to the voters for $35 million when school populations have gone down so significantly in that period of time. And the economy has been hit so hard also, and so many of our taxpayers are out of work. And then to go out and ask them to pay tens of millions of dollars for a brand-new school. I think we should go back out for a public survey and identify, particularly in the Inlet View community, what they really want. If they just want a remodel, I think we ought to rethink this thing to do a remodel in the six-year plan. I think that would be the fair thing to do. And also to the general community, to think what they think about the board's abandonment, which you, we had a longstanding policy that we were gonna emphasize deferred maintenance and not build new buildings. But we had, for the earthquake, we amended that, but that was for the earthquake. And now that's been bootstrapped to justify a series of new building proposals. And it was, we needed to adjust that policy because we needed to deal with the earthquake situation. But it now has become an excuse or an authorization to put forward these major, major capital investments at a time when population and size and, and school vacancy factors are increasing. So I think this six-year plan has a lot of problems to it. And we really need to get more input from the community on it and, and to rethink a lot of this.
Thank you, Member Donley. Next up is Member Hildy.
Thank you. You know, as I mentioned the last time we discussed this, the voters did approve the bond with Inlet View replacement. That's what voters chose for, and I think we ought to honor, honor what the voters chose for, trusting that they know what they're doing. I understand the argument, though, that we, we do have population changes and we don't know. And, and things could be very different even six months from now. So I think that is important. I strongly support multi-year bonds. We saw the benefit of this year. Can you even imagine if we were working on bonds right now? We, we have efficiencies to be gained in doing multi-year bonding. So that's one thing I will push for if we're going to adjust the CIP for something based on revised student enrollment numbers. You know, that I understand. I don't think we can do that on this CIP, but for next year, I understand that argument. But the multi-year bonding is, I believe, strongly the wise decision for our district in effectively and responsibly and efficiently managing our capital improvements.
Thank you. I tried to raise my hand. It didn't show up, but there I am. So I'm just going to just, I hear what board members are saying and I'm echoing the comments insofar as we are in a year of total influx, whether it is, you know, student population overall at our district or, you know, in individual schools, you know, stuff like that. I do count our blessings that we're not doing a bond this year in the middle of all this. Anytime I've looked, you know, personally at a CIP, I really, I have a hard time giving a six-year outlook a whole lot of weight because of all of the changes that we do make. But I know we have to do it because we're required to do it. But I also know that every time it comes up, whether it is the CIP or a bond that is tied to it on an annual basis or semi-annual basis, things do change. This does not lock us into what we see on paper right here. It is merely, you know, here is what the next step of, you know, what could be a plan. And it sets up and it tees off a discussion, you know, a year from now or eight months from now or whatever the appropriate time to bring this back off the shelf and, you know, have these big, major discussions. And I, I agree with, you know, several of the comments. We don't know where we're gonna be six or nine months from now. We don't know what our populations are gonna look like. But we still have to turn this in. And so trying to, it feels like a chicken and an egg thing in a way. And right now, I support putting this forward, you know, as it is, knowing that we are gonna come back to this, you know, in due time to have these big discussions and be able to do it right in the time, in the moment that it is being done. Not trying to second-guess 2025 from 2020 right now. And so that's my two cents for what it's worth. Did any other board members have any other comments?
Yes.
Member Marsette.
And actually, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't move forward with what we have. I just wanted to, maybe because I won't be here next year, I guess I wanted to put in my two cents for next year. But just to caution board members to take a closer look at it and hopefully have more information before putting it forward. But I agree with you. Right now, this is what we should put forward. This is what we have. Now's not the time to change it, but just to realize that there will be extenuating circumstances next year and that it'll need a second look.
Thank you. Not seeing any other board members' hands. Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was waiting to make sure nobody else who hadn't spoke got an opportunity. The numbers that I presented were based on a two-year debt assumption. So those aren't impacted. I was not arguing against two-year bonds. I was arguing against incurring lots more debt than is being retired in those two- I was arguing against incurring lots more debt than is being retired in those two years. So those are two-year calculations. That's what's so significant about them. 67% increase in debt over what's being retired in the fourth year out. I think this is a bad plan. I think this community cannot afford this plan. I think there are tens of thousands of workers in this community that are out of work right now, and we're going to raise their property taxes? I think that's insane. I think this plan should be adjusted based on the immediate circumstances this community is faced with so that people can actually plan. That's the purpose of a six-year plan, is the plan. If we continue to leave it the way it is now, we're not planning for the circumstances we know actually exist. I would, I'm going to move an amendment to the six-year plan at this time that would have the school district go out for a survey of the community and actually see if the community still supports moving forward with building a new elementary school, what the projected cost is in this existing six-year plan, and see if the community supports incurring more debt in these out-years than is actually being retired. So I would move that, that we do a new survey asking the community whether or not they support those elements of this six-year plan.
Member Donley, our board secretary has requested either super succinct language so she can type it in or, you know, to email it to her real quick. She wants to make sure she's getting your motion correct for the record.
I move that the Anchorage School District do a survey to identify whether the community supports incurring greater debt than is being retired consistent with the six-year plan as it is presented to us here, and whether the community supports moving forward to build additional new schools, replacement schools, as identified in the six-year plan here.
Madam President, can I just ask a question?
Let me get one second. Is there a second to that motion, and then we can open it up for discussion?
You know, I don't really think that's appropriate at this time for the staff injecting themselves in this.
Mr. Donley, if you just heard, I asked for a second to open it up for discussion, so, and I don't have that yet. That's the one thing I'm asking for. Do I have a second to Mr. Donley's motion? All right, so right now I'm not seeing a second for the motion, so at this time the motion does not, is not a valid motion right now.
Okay, so if I still have the floor, I just say how disappointed I am that the board doesn't want to find out what the community feels about this now that we've gone through this COVID crisis and the fact that they were faced with this terrible choice of voting against earthquake money or being forced to fund a brand-new school. I'd like to hear how the people feel about that. So I'm disappointed that my fellow board members don't want to do that.
Member Hildy, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, and just through the chair, I support us reaching out to the community for a revised CIP based on fluctuating student enrollment, but I don't want to do it today, right? Maybe that's a conversation we have in the summer. Maybe that's something we work on in conjunction with the next bond we do. You know, I think that's an appropriate time, and I would support talking about it. So I don't think this is a no to seeking community input, but it's, we have a lot of present issues, and I think that's one that we can, you know, they're all important, but we can't do them all immediately.
Board Member Marsette.
I would agree. It's not that I don't want us to find out what the community wants, but I do believe that this is something that can wait until next year, and we can do the same thing. I think right now, what's on our community's mind, our parents' mind, is, you know, do we go back to school? Would you not go back to school? How do we provide education? I mean, there's so much stress and concern with the current circumstances that I do think this probably is not the best time to put out another survey, although I do agree with Mr. Donley that possibly next year it would be a good thing to do.
I have my hand raised in the queue as well. Not to belabor the point, but I also agree that as times and things are moving, I know that we usually do like a, you know, a pre, a post-bond survey, stuff like that. Would also like to see one, you know, happen in a timely fashion so that we can get some insight. And so all for that in a timely manner. And so I don't see any other board members' hands up in the queue. So at this time, Katie, could you please do a roll call vote on ASD Memorandum 047?
Member Mitchell.
Of course, I have myself muted. Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
No.
Vice President Marsette, or Bellamy, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And President McIlas.
Yes.
ASD Memorandum number 047 passes with six yays and one nays. Next up.
Next item. I move to approve ASD Memorandum 052 and authorize the superintendent to award a design bill contract for the West High School Utilidor Upgrades Phase II Design Bill Project to Roger Hickel Contracting Incorporated for a total award amount of $2,276,706.
Are there any questions on ASD Memorandum 052? Not seeing any. Katie, could you please do a roll call vote? Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
President McIlas.
Yes.
And Member Marsette.
Yes.
ASD Memorandum number 052 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 053 authorize the superintendent to utilize design bill project delivery method for a fire alarm upgrade in the Service High School Building EF Gym, which is a gym.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD Memorandum 053? Not seeing any. Katie, could you please do a roll call vote? Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
President McIlas.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
And Member Marsette.
Yes.
ASD Memorandum 053 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up.
And a final one. I move to approve ASD Memorandum number 054 transfer of funds for charter school enrollment and various instructional and support items in the amount of $10,328,371 for fiscal year 2021 as listed below.
Second.
Do any board members have any questions on ASD Memorandum 054? Seeing none, Katie, could you please do a roll call vote? President McIlas.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
And Member Mitchell.
Yes.
ASD Memorandum 054 passes with seven yays and zero nays. That brings us to the end of our action items, and next up on our agenda is non-action items. Are there items that board members wish to pull?
Yes.
Member Hildy.
I'd like to pull Memorandum 062.
Okay, and Member Marsette.
I'd like to pull the Task Force Update, number one.
Okay, and did you also want to pull, or did anybody want to pull, the Student Nutrition COVID Impact Conversation?
Oh, yes, I forgot about that. Yes, yes, yes.
All right, any others wish to be pulled? Here we go. Item number one, ASD School Start 20... Member Hildy.
Will we, can we take a break, like a stretch break?
All right, five-minute comfort break. We are back, we are starting at 9:30, so. All right, board members, it is 9:30. We're going to go ahead and continue our discussion. We have three non-action items pulled. Just working my way down the list. The first one is the ASD School Start 2021 Task Force Update. And Member Marsette, you pulled this item, so I will let you kick it off with a question or a comment. And you're on mute.
I pulled this because, I mean, we talk about it all the time. I know certain things we're still looking at preparing classrooms and that sort of thing. But I guess my question is, are we also looking, I know our focus at this time is K through two and special needs, getting them back in the classroom, but are we looking at the school as a whole? Like, is there discussion on how we might get high school students back in, or, you know, what are we doing in that venue as far as the School Start Task Force?
Madam President, I would like to have Dr. Stock pulled up.
I am here.
Did you catch that question in regard to just planning the bigger picture after K2 and what we're planning? Thank you, Dr. Stock.
I did. Thank you through the President to Member Marsette. The School Start Task Force will be looking at a variety of, of a couple of different phase-in plans that we'll take to them yet this week. And so, yes, we are looking at, just like we had previously, we had the K through two plan, but we also had plans for middle school and high school. But what we're looking at is a phased-in project, a phased-in plan that would take place over a period of time so that we would be able to make sure that we're getting all of our bugs worked out and all of the problems taken care of as we go. But it would start just like we did before with our pre-K through grade two, and then there would be a phased-in process over time. Whenever the decision is made that it's good to go and it's safe to go, when that happens, this plan would go into place. And yes, it does include all levels over time.
I guess my next question would be, even before we're ready to go, will the plan, once it's completed, will the plan be presented so that everyone knows what that plan is when we do start school back up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Were there any other board members that had questions on this ASD School Start non-action item? Member Holloman.
Is there a current start date for middle, high school? Is there something planned right now?
There are no start dates. What we've got is a phased-in plan that when the decision is made to go, and again, that's got to be run through the School Start Task Force and other groups to look at, but there are, in the planning phases, yes, those are replanned out, and there isn't a, what I would call it, there's no date certain. We've been down that road. We've had a date certain, and then it gets pushed back. What we're talking about is having a plan, as Member Marsette said, that would be fully vetted and aware, and everyone knows. And then when it's time to start, then everyone would know when that decision is made. But it is without a date certain on it. It's done by weeks. So there'd be a phase-in plan over weeks of time on how it would all unfold. That's the current thinking.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
Thank you. So I have a clarifying question, Dr. Stock, or Dr. Bishop, I'm not, whichever one can. Clarify, my clarifying question is, can, like, Kate, right now, when we were planning for K2 and special needs students to return, did principals have the option to, I know they had the option or the creativity to design their spaces. Do they also have the opportunity to design the program that they, that kids come back into? So, for instance, I know, I know that at least one title school has a plan that will keep their schools at, keep their kids in, from their neighborhood at their school and provide both online and in-person learning. So is, so can I just get clarity around, is that a possibility for every school?
But we've certainly shared with the public and, and, you know, just shared in a broader sense that, you know, conditions right now don't look favorable to us. So, once we, you know, when, when, some of the criticisms have been, oh, we don't communicate and we don't know when you communicate. And so, a parameter around that was to answer, you know, the, the, the board shared that feedback, to have set dates to communicate. And of course, on the ninth, we had school out, we're now under a new, you know, I guess, three weeks of not really a hunger down, but pay attention. And so, it's likely that we're, we're not getting back under this scenario. But I, I do see our next update being able to give more definitive from now until the, the end of the year. But they do come out in those. Really, we had, we did not want to mix, you know, the difference between, you know, some of those smaller things that were starting. We also had, principals are very, very frustrated that they can't start, and they're very frustrated that it was a start and stop because they have their staffs ready. And, and basically, they felt that people, you know, and another opinion was shared with me that folks that aren't involved in the process are, are making the decisions or giving testimony that they shouldn't start, but they were very proud of theirs. So, last I met with the, the Executive Board of APA, their staff, just like everyone, is in different places, has different feelings, has different experiences in regard to COVID, but that they are working with their supervisor and, and adjusting and working through the issues and if, and their concerns. If Dan has anything that I left out from that conversation, you can jump in.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the Board President to member Mitchell. As Dr. Bishop said, working through all of those considerations, I think a significant portion of our elementary principals want students back absolutely as soon as possible. To the, the piece of your question about if elementary, as a group, have engaged in discussions about delaying until third quarter, that, that's not a conversation we've taken up in elementary. At this point, obviously, there are factors here at play that have to do with community health numbers we don't control, but all of our efforts right now are around planning to return earlier than third quarter, if at all possible.
Can I follow up on that, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I guess two questions to follow up. One is, so it sounds like you don't sense for any of the levels, for elementary or secondary, that the benefit of being able to know that, you know, for this quarter, this is what it's going to be, and I can just stay the course. You think that's outweighed by the nimbleness that it's going to give you to make that announcement on the first and fifteenth of every month? And then the follow-up also, Dr. Bishop, you said, I think I heard you said, but I may have misinterpreted, that the principals were, maybe didn't agree with the decision to halt going back on November sixteenth. So I'm, I guess, I'm.
Not necessarily on the sixteenth of that particular, what they're stressed about, member Mitchell, is the, the feeling that they're doing all this work ready, they feel ready, and they feel it's wishy-washy, although we've just been responding, really internally to, and, and like I said, the, the pressure internally has been very similar, you know, not even at these case counts, but at, at, you know, when we've had four hundred less, and so, a day. So, we, they're, they're just feel, starting and stopping and putting so much energy into this, it's frustrating. I didn't necessarily say that I, I had a feeling in regard to, you know, stopping for a quarter or not. Our goal was to continue to assess, and as we gain more information, we can make more decisions. We did not want to take the, the hope, if you will, out of understanding. It's become more evident every day that the cases are rising, but again, within two, generally, if you trace back to when we make an announcement, it looks doable. And then by the time we give the amount of time to prep and as, you know, more time, more time, more time, then, you know, cases, you know, just spike. So at this point in time, it is what it is, we have a lot of cases, we'll come out with another announcement in December, and we'll make that determination. But the, the focus throughout this time of what they're frustrated and what they shared was that they're just ready to go, and then it really deflated them when we didn't start after putting in so much energy, so much work, and feeling that they are ready. And I think you saw that when you visited a school, they were confident and ready and spoke fondly of, you know, the reading programs they have now. Of course, there's lots of unanswered questions that we, we, you know, operate as we move through it, the, the additional details going through training. But yeah, so, you know, again, the, the feelings and frustrations are, are, you know, up and down through this whole work. But Mr. Barker there has the best take on working with them directly, having a meeting every week, answering their questions, sending directors to their buildings to support, you know, all the, the needs that they have.
And is the feeling the same at the secondary?
The secondary didn't have anything to, to start, they were not starting in this semester, so.
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm hearing from secondary also that, you know, there's a lot of concern, we hear it in the testimony from parents and students, that they don't know what's going on. So, I put myself back in the queue because I don't want to hog the questions, but I'll, I'll, I'll loop back around with my follow-up to that.
Yeah, and, and I would just say it's really the bigger picture of uncertainty. We've, we've outlined our communications, we follow through with them. We meet weekly with senior leaders and send out a couple days a week newsletters. And so, our goal is to be responsive, but, you know, it's, it's frustrating when we, we live and breathe this every day, working through these, and, and schools know, principals know more than their teachers, and their teachers probably know more than their parents through this. And it's, it's, it's literally working through all the issues. If you have anything to add, Mark or Dan?
This, Mark, through, through the President, I would just reiterate this simple fact that we're working on a phased-in program, plan over time. So, you know, the question about the date certain, when will it start? Well, we'll bring you a plan that shows how it would phase in, but it's, it's, it's built around weeks, not dates. So the concept is over so many weeks, so many weeks, things would roll out so that there's time to do it, and there's, there is a lag in there that I think would meet the need of, of doing this gradually and, and safely and slow enough that we can do it well. And so, we'll bring you that plan after School Start Task Force has had a chance to weigh in on it and maybe, you know, debate it, and, but we have some, some plans to at least let them start looking at that we can bring to you after they've all seen them.
And I just want to clarify, I'm not, I'm not asking to say we should set a date by which we enter back into school. What I'm saying is, the spread, you know, we had that red zone at the two hundred cases per, for, for hundred thousand, for the fourteen, fourteen-day rolling average, and that went up to four hundred, I don't know, four weeks ago, then it went up to six hundred, eight hundred, over a thousand now. I, you know, and I, I'm not a, an epidemiologist, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but given that we are going into Thanksgiving and Christmas, and I think somebody mentioned earlier that people just can't, can't not get together, and that seems to be where most of the spread is happening. I might, if I were a betting person, I would say that probably our numbers are not going to come down significantly. So what I'm saying is, it might be, you know, have you considered saying, we absolutely will not start this process, or we won't start it for middle and high school, or we won't start it until at least this point in time? So people have a period where they know, okay.
We'll have that considered, member Mitchell, we haven't made that determination yet, but that is being considered, yes.
Great, thank you.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Holloman.
Thank you, and this is sort of following in the same theme. It seems like what we're trying to do is get back to the situation we know best and function best in, which also happens to carry the most risk. And I think maybe what some of the, the public is asking us to do is look at what we can do safely, and then try to start doing that really well. And I think we're seeing a lot of success with it, it didn't come immediately, and it's, it's been a painful process, but we are seeing it happen, and we're seeing a lot of the teachers I've talked to, a lot of the parents I've talked to are liking what's happening. And it comes with a lot of stability and lack of chaos for their family because no one's being exposed. If we do get back in school, we, you know, if we turn around and look at Kenai and we look at the Matsui right now, where a number of schools are, are closing in the middle of the day, or they're sending kids home early, or they're sending them to other schools, or, you know, a lot's happening. And in the process, people are being exposed to the virus, which, if you're a family that's otherwise being safe, having your child exposed brings chaos into your home, and a level of uncertainty into your home that a lot of people don't want to have. So I, I think there may be some value in looking at what we're able to do remotely and, and do that better. And sort of what member Mitchell was getting at, put that time out there to where people aren't going to be switching necessarily so fast. A couple of weeks is pretty good notice, but it did drive a lot of our families, once they realized that if they made that switch in the, the middle of the semester or quarter, whatever we're calling them right at the moment, they'd be switching teachers, they'd be switching programs for their kids if they didn't send their kids back. And that created a lot of tension for families as they suddenly came to realize how big of a change it would make in their, in what they were doing. So I, I think we, we should be looking at what we're succeeding at doing safely in this situation. And there's a lot of that going on, I'm kind of sorry for all the bells and whistles here. It, it just doesn't seem like we have focused on that as being a viable solution. So I, I hope as we move forward, given the fact that right now this looks like it is going to be with us probably through the end of the school year as a, as a major factor, that we do those things we could do safely well becomes as big a goal as just getting kids back into the classroom. And, and part of that would have to be outreach to students that aren't doing well, that may not want to be back in schools either, but still need us to reach out to them in a way that is more effective than anything we're doing right at the moment. Thank you.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Hildy.
Thank you, so I had a question and a comment. One is a question, when would you anticipate having something to share either with the board or community on next step? What, what might the next step be? And then just the board, you know, we're throwing out all these ideas, but not actually providing any direction to the superintendent. We provided direction in our August memo of saying we're going to give you this flexibility, but these discussions don't really reflect that. What I would ask for our board, and what I'm asking tonight on our next item, is that we start talking directly about, if, if you want to talk about, you know, going online in the spring for a concrete group of kids, let's, let's just tell her, you know, let's, let's say we're going to do that if that's what we want to do. You put it on for a non-action item, doesn't even have to have a motion with it. But then we talk about it publicly, let people have input in it, and then our superintendent can have some clear direction if that's something we, you know, are going to support or not support. But, but the part where we're just going to keep saying, well, maybe this, well, maybe this, maybe this, maybe this, that's not actually getting us to a solution. So that's, that's my request, that if there's something to talk, and, and it doesn't have to mean that's what you want, right? You can even just say, here's some, something I've heard about, and I, that's how our agenda is made. This is a community concern, and I want to talk about it. So, or if we need another work session to say, where are we at? You know, get some of these things worked out. But just talking and talking and talking isn't really getting us to direction or clarity for our community. So that's, that's what I'm hoping to get out of tonight's meeting, that we can start to change that practice.
So, through the President to member Hildy, with an update, the update that would be more definitive would come around the, the next talking point, December first, which really, you know, is, is next week. We, this came on the agenda, so that, you know, is part of it, we're continuing to learn. But when we talk to people, when I've talked on the radio, you know, share the significance of the high numbers, I mean, it, it's intuitive that it would be difficult, but that December first, we will communicate in a broader sense.
Thank you, I'm going to go ahead and ask my two quick questions, and then I've got two more board members behind me still. The two questions, and I'm not quite sure who to direct them to. Does our AEA contract allow for ASD virtual night options? Or something to that effect that might, you know, work for some families?
Through the President, to the President, actually, to the President. Actually, yes, ASD virtual, in, in the sense that it started very similar to high school, we really had to change some practices that we did, and that was some of the frustrations. People had expected what high school was, teachers who had taught in high school expected that. But ASD virtual actually. So I hope as we move forward, given the fact that right now this looks like it is going to be with us probably through the end of the school year as a major factor, that we do those things we could do safely well becomes as big a goal as just getting kids back into the classroom. And part of that would have to be outreach to students that aren't doing well, that may not want to be back in schools either, but still need us to reach out to them in a way that is more effective than anything we're doing right at the moment. Thank you.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. So I had a question and a comment. One is a question, when would you anticipate having something to share either with the board or community on next step? What might the next step be? And then just the board, you know, we're throwing out all these ideas, but not actually providing any direction to the superintendent. We provided direction in our August memo of saying, we're going to give you this flexibility, but these discussions don't really reflect that. What I would ask for our board and what I'm asking tonight on our next item is that we start talking directly about if you want to talk about, you know, going online in the spring for a concrete group of kids, let's just tell us, you know, let's say we're going to do that if that's what we want to do, put it on for a non-action item. Doesn't even have to have a motion with it, but then we talk about it publicly, let people have input in it. And then our superintendent can have some clear direction if that's something we, you know, are going to support or not support. But the part where we're just going to keep saying, well, maybe this, well, maybe this, maybe this, maybe this, that's not actually getting us to a solution. So that's my request, that if there's something to talk, and it doesn't have to mean that's what you want, right? You can even just say, here's something I've heard about and I, that's how our agenda is made. This is a community concern and I want to talk about it. So, or if we need another work session to say, where are we at, you know, get some of these things worked out. But just talking and talking and talking isn't really getting us to direction or clarity for our community. So that's what I'm hoping to get out of tonight's meeting, that we can start to change that practice.
Through the president to Member Hildy, with an update, the update that would be more definitive would come around the next talking point, December 1st, which really, you know, is next week. We, this came on the agenda, so that, you know, is part of it. We're continuing to learn. But when we talk to people, when I've talked on the radio, you know, share the significance of the high numbers, I mean, it's intuitive that it would be difficult, but that December 1st, we will communicate in a broader sense.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and ask my two quick questions, and then I've got two more board members behind me still. The two questions, and I'm not quite sure who to direct them to. Does our AEA contract allow for ASD virtual night options or something to that effect that might, you know, work for some families?
Through the president, to the president, actually, to the president. Actually, yes, ASD virtual, in the sense that it started very similar to high school, we really had to change some practices that we did, and that was some of the frustrations. People had expected what high school was, teachers who had taught in high school expected that. But ASD virtual actually, they've worked with individual teachers to do flexibility. So there's a lot of things that go on the evening. Part of ASD virtual that is new is the desire for parents to have Zoom classes. They had had them before, but they were taped. And so then you can watch them when you want. But just to let you know, as far as the virtual, they can get on it anytime, anyplace, and then look at the teacher's taped lessons. But I want you to know that many teachers communicate both online as well as in the ASD virtual in regard to contacting parents at night. You know, that's when the parent can talk to them and catch up. So I would say that the teachers are very flexible in ASD virtual, and that's an expectation. But also in our online, there's also flexibility. The contract does call for contract hours. That's why we collectively as a group have that. There's a different expectation for virtual, and we've shared that as, you know, eyes wide open, you know, being a teacher. But I would say in general, even outside of any kind of memorandum of agreement, that teachers are being flexible in the evenings.
And I totally understand that. I just didn't know if there's a way to adjust their duty hours in a way so that we're not asking to work, you know, 18 hour days, they're still working their, you know, regular day, but it's just shifted towards the night or something like that.
Absolutely. If there's a request for that, we can certainly do that for virtual. It truly is around their schedule and what they can do. And some teachers take a break in the middle, but we have, you know, a director of that or a principal of that that can really address those concerns from the teachers. Because they, their kids are all around the district and different places. So we can certainly adjust to that and find the need.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, you had referred to Richard Caranza and New York and how maybe New York City has, you know, their metric and their threshold. But what was actually happening inside the schools was, you know, maybe telling a different story. Is there any sort of a metric for schools, once they're open? What, you know, their transmission rate is, or what their COVID rate in their school relative to their school population, so that there is a distinction between what's happening in schools versus what's happening in the community? Is that something to look at?
I mean, that's what we're entering now, that we're finding, you know, a metric that we had once called for. People want to go back to that because that's what they knew. They had a very low bar compared to their governor in the entire state of New York because that was such a hotspot, if you will, at the beginning, outside of Seattle first and then going to New York. And so for the confidence of getting folks back, they chose a very low threshold. And now the community pressure is actually flipped and demonstrating that you didn't have, you know, how could you pick an arbitrary number to keep us out of schools now? And again, it's the emotional state around it, you know, the, between the city and the governor. I mean, we could just liken conversations, it's just a different look. But they did, you know, reach that number and, you know, we were reading and Dr. Stock and I just discussing it and then talking and asking direct questions to Superintendent Caranza. You know, they're struggling with very similar issues. It's just the flip side of that because they're, they did cancel with like a one one hundredth of a percent of testing because they do random testing in their schools. So it was, it struggled. Their families are struggling with the understanding of keeping kids out of school when it's such a low viral spread. That's a different scenario than here. Thank you.
And next up is Board Member Mitchell.
And I don't believe that Board Member Hildy has spoken yet on this issue, so I'm happy to defer to her and then go next. Alicia, you have already.
Well, all I was going to say was that I didn't mean to say, don't ask questions. This is a great time to ask questions. I was, you know, trying to keep it solution, you know, what's going to come out of this discussion? But so that's all I was going to say.
So can I go ahead and go?
Yes.
Thanks. So I definitely agree with Member Hildy. I think that coming up with solutions is a great idea. And I think that we have, I think that the community would like very transparent. The CDC has very clear guidelines, and I would like to see us go back to having this be metric based, using those CDC guidelines. They are very, very clear. They're very transparent. And I also think that we should include in that discussion to avoid some of the issues that Dr. Bishop was just talking about with New York City. We should also have a very clear understanding that, you know, if we go back to, if, you know, God willing, if we can get back to in-person school this year, you know, there is a vaccine on the horizon and, you know, maybe community spread will come down. Hopefully it will, that if the numbers start going up again, that we will have to go into shutdown again, that it really is going to take the community. And I'm hopeful that these PSA ads and, you know, everything else that we can do, working with the muni, working with the state, everybody in a coordinated effort can bring those numbers down. But I think it's really important to not only say, you know, we can't consider going into schools unless these key core indicators are down to these levels. And please, community, know that if we do go back to in-person school for whatever groups that we're going back in with, if they spike again, we're going to have to shut it down. So I think that having that clarity will really help our community greatly. And I would absolutely, you know, in terms of being solution oriented, that would be my proposal to really put together some clear metrics that would guide our decision making. And I know that, you know, the task force looks at a bunch of different stuff, but I think we need to come up with something, even if it's, you know, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good enough, I think is the saying. I probably boxed that up. But something that makes it very clear that if these conditions aren't met, we can't consider going in person. Maybe there are other things that will factor on top of that. I'm sure there will be. But that there's some very clear, measurable, objective metrics that people understand and can say, yeah, I get it. I understand. You know, there is research that children do spread the disease. And actually, I have an interesting anecdote that I got from a friend the other day. She said her eldest daughter and her husband are a nurse and a PA, a physician's assistant in Anchorage at one of the medical centers, one of the hospitals. They both caught COVID from patients at that hospital the last week of October. Unknowingly, they infected their three children, ages two, four, and six. Those two, the nurse and the PA's children, play with their cousin, age seven, passed COVID to that cousin. So this was sent to me two days ago, and this happened at the end of October. So they passed COVID to the seven-year-old cousin. He passed it to his whole household. All of this happened in a very short timeframe, even to people who are medically trained and who have been keeping their bubbles small. So we know that kids get it. We know that kids transfer it. And, you know, the more we learn, because the cases among children are increasing and there is more research being focused on that now, the more we'll understand the risks that we're taking. But I think it is very, very important to be just crystal clear and have some really clear lines in the sand that this is, this is a bare minimum that we have to have before we can consider bringing our kids back into schools.
Thank you. Next up is Board Member Marseth.
So I have to ask the question, when we talk about giving the superintendent guidance, the last time the superintendent, if she had not pulled starting schools, this board was considering voting to resend her powers to make that decision. So are we saying, and I'm just asking, because I think we need to know this, and I think Dr. Bishop needs to know this, are we saying that if again, Dr. Bishop and her team comes up with a plan and we disagree with it, are we going to vote to resend those powers again? I'm just wondering where the board is on trusting Dr. Bishop to make this decision since it is, it is her job. And I know that we don't always agree, and I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't. I'm just asking the question.
Well, if board members want to, you know, take a shot at that individually as they come up in the queue, the next person up is Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, to answer that question, I supported Dr. Bishop's proposal to open up today, I think it is. I thought it was a measured, reasonable step that was long overdue. I thought for many, many months, we used the wrong matrix. I was proven right about that, after four months of warning us we were using the wrong matrix. I think the system we have now is vastly superior to what we had during the first four months of this pandemic. And I think it's a much more reasoned, takes into consideration the factors as the last time I looked at the CDC factors, it's got those in there. I don't agree that we need to adopt specific numerical caseload thresholds because our kids' education is more important than an arbitrary number. Our kids are losing a year here. It's going to be very difficult for them to ever get this back. And it's just, it's, I'm not willing to surrender the future of my children to an arbitrary number. I think that a measured consideration by the system that we got now, of all the appropriate factors, is more appropriate than just choosing arbitrary numbers and saying, oh, this is what we're going to do based on that. That was the mistake we made eight months ago. And I'm much happier now. I think we've got a much superior system than we had in those months where I spoke at every meeting, saying we had the wrong one. So I'm willing to support that system. And when that system says it's time to open up these schools again, to go with the plan that the superintendent has put forth with a phased in opening up. I'm really concerned about our special ed kids, getting them back as soon as possible, our K through two and three. They're losing the key years, time of their life to learn to read. I'm not going to surrender that to an arbitrary number. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Board Member Hildy.
Oh, let's do right. I started thinking about what he's saying. Sorry. So it's Member Marseth's question. Oh, yeah. Okay. So in August, we decided to give the superintendent the flexibility to respond real time, not wait for non-agenda items and action items, then a month later we get to, you know, make decisions. But that doesn't mean we ever give up our ability to say, hey, we don't like that idea. If she said, I decide to open up schools tomorrow, full stop, without worrying about anything, which she would never do, you know, let's say for like exaggeration, we could then say what Member Marseth said, we said, well, we're going to change course now. So we never lose that ability to change course or change direction. We voted as a board to say we want to give her flexibility because these do require fast-moving pieces. And we know that she's using the very best information, using the very best science available, the very best people working on this. And we always have that review point available to us if at some point we say, you know, we're going to change course. That's a board's prerogative. But the current course is the one that we decided on, and that's the direction Dr. Bishop has to operate under.
Board Member Mitchell.
Well, I guess I have a bunch of anecdotes from teachers, and I could read a bunch of them about how effectively this is working. I don't think that learning is not happening. I think that what we need to do is say that, what can we do to, there are students. I mean, I talked to one principal who talked about a family in her, in a trailer park in her district where there are 15 people living in the trailer. There are five adults and 10 young people. They don't want to expand their bubble, but we could bring those 10 students into a facility and have them stay in their bubble with an adult to supervise them. And then they would have space to work. They could use the camera on the Zoom, which they can't use in their trailer. They would have quiet, they would get their breakfast, they would get their lunch. Let's figure out what we can do right now to help the students that every principal and every teacher know need support. And I'm not saying that's not happening already. I know that that's happening. I know great things are happening in our schools, but I, as a board member, would certainly be willing to put more resources into that. I think it's something we could ask for other assistance with. But to me, I disagree that arbitrary, that we would be putting arbitrary numbers on this. I believe the Centers for Disease Control. I don't think that the epidemiologists and infectious disease specialists and public health specialists, I don't think they just come up with arbitrary numbers. I think they have really assessed risk factors. And for example, they know that if the spread is over one, you know, if it's 1.2, this is going to double every five weeks in that community, and that's unacceptable. So those, to me, those are not arbitrary numbers. And what I approved in August is not what we are using now. So I personally think it does warrant going back and rethinking. And Dr. Bishop, in the update you sent out Friday evening to staff and community members and families, you said, although we cannot yet put a firm date on the calendar, the school board will continue to deliberate Monday when to allow students back to school. So I didn't know if that was, you know, an acknowledgement on your part that we do need to revisit that, that matrix. But I absolutely think we have, we are, to me, what has changed since August is pretty significant. So I think that they're, in the interest of transparency, and, you know, I'm here to represent the community and what parents are telling me, what students are telling me, what community members, businesses are telling me, they really would like some certainty. And certainty comes from understanding, okay, if we're going to be following the core indicator of the total number, the 14-day average number of cases, and the testing rate, and the increase or decrease over time, then tell me what those are. I can look at how that's trending, and I can understand where we may be going. But if we're not going to have any kind of, you know, if 200 is the red zone and we're at 600 and we still are moving straight ahead to go into schools, I think that creates a lot of uncertainty and uncomfortableness for people. So I'm really trying to represent all of the input that I am getting and allow for our people to have certainty. People, you know, I think even more than unpleasantness, people like uncertainty less. So if you tell me, you know, I'm going to have to do this really tough job, but I don't know when it's over, that's really hard for me to deal with. But if I have to go, you know, muck the stalls and in two weeks I'm going to, I see the end in sight, I can do it. I can deal with it. I see the end. So I think that having that certainty is really critical for our community. I think it's important for us as a board to set that guidance. That's our job. I mean, it really is. I do believe that this is what is going to be our policy. There's a reason that we were asked to authorize this in August. It does set policy for when we are going to, how we're going to run school during this pandemic, basically. So that would be my thought to Member Marseth's question.
I think it was your question. I've got two board members up in the queue. Do want to remind board members that we do have two more non-action items to discuss and an ever-growing late night, so hoping for succinct comments. Member Bellamy, you're up next.
Sure. Thank you. So to Member Marseth's comment or her question earlier, for me, it's not, it's not that simple. I don't, I don't see my questioning or my having needing more information as necessarily not agreeing with the superintendent. I actually agree with the phased in plan. I did not agree with the timing. And I thought, and that's just me. I'm one of seven votes. But I also had concerns around how we did the, you know, we did the matrix. We are ASD, which makes us part of the muni, which makes us part of the state of Alaska. There is no, we are not in sync with each other. And maybe, maybe that's partly why, you know, we can't control this surge is because we're all sending a different kind of message. It's a, and so maybe if we work more coordinated and we shared the same data, we had the same framework or a similar framework. Superintendent has already told us that she's working with the muni weekly. What is, so how can we maybe work more together to come up with a framework that works for Anchorage, the city of Anchorage, of which we are a part of? So I don't necessarily see myself as standing in opposition to Dr. Bishop's plan. I actually support the plan. But when I have questions, you know, we are limited. I actually support the plan, but when I have questions, uh, you know, we are limited with how we can ask those questions. For some of us, it works to write a question and get a written answer. And for others of us, that does not work. So then the only, uh, uh, format we have is to make space in these meetings. So I would love to see, um, uh, you know, one set of ma- matrix that we can agree on as a community, if not as a district, so that we know, uh, we, we know where we are on any given, at, at, at any given time. And I really don't think we're going to be too far away. I mean, our mitigation plan is exceptional. I really think we can make it work, but we cannot make it work isolating ourselves within this community. We have got to try to work within the greater community so that we can, as a community, survive this and, uh, educate our kids.
Thank you, um, Member Bellamy. And I, I would like to, uh, share, um, that I have asked the city, point blank, our former mayor, as well as, uh, the Health Department. And I, they, they want to say a number and that's what you're asking, give me a number, give me a number. And, and frankly, it does become an arbitrary number. And that's actually the argument in New York, that they picked this number, they're a hundredth over it, and yet they closed school, which didn't make sense to them. Uh, just so you know, I mean, it is part of, those terms are exactly what, what is being discussed in other cities. But I asked and said, they said, well, what, what are you basing it on? And we shared, you know, the CDC guidelines and, and I posed the question back. And this was, uh, when we had kind of a reset. And I said, you know, the city just took action. And this was prior to, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, uh, Austin Quinn-Davisson. I said, we, we just had a change. We had a kind of a reset to, what were the metrics that made you decide that? Like, give me your number. And the response from Heather Harris at the, at the state, at the city, was that there's really so many factors. There really isn't one thing that we consider. We have to weigh so many factors that it's hard to just do that. We don't do it that way. So, uh, then in the discussions, they continue. What, what would make us move from, uh, and, and we kind of see it. Um, I, you know, we know that it is viral spread to a part when they, when you can't respond to it. That, that's kind of key. And so I'm seeing the pattern in the city as well, how they caution. But to your point, they have not, they are at 50%. So for them right now, if we want to keep the standard that's already here, we should be open right now. If we use the standard of the city of Anchorage. They are at 50% capacity and they've set that. They are at absolutely wear masks, social distance yourself. So, so it's, I, I hear the ask, it isn't that I'm ignoring you, it isn't that. I'm just saying it is, when you sit in the spot that has to make the decisions, like the mayor and the Health Department and me and, and others at this point in time, those are simple answers to complex questions. And that it, if the city does create something, we would be happy to create it with them. But at this point in time, I, I, I would say that we are abiding by their standards. And we in fact are listening to them in the precautionary not start for today. It is in conjunction with the city.
Next up is Member Donley. You're on mute, sir. Dave, I think you're on mute.
The fact is, that was the mistake that was made the first four months of this. We had one standard for everything. That was wrong. We're not, it is not appropriate to have the same standard for schools as it is for other places in this community. Now, I agree, we should work with the city, as, just exactly as the superintendent just stated. But we should not have an identical standard or the identical factors for how the city makes its decision for our schools. Our schools are a unique circumstance, a different circumstance, different factual, different data, different metrics, different medical evidence involved. So no, we should not use the same standard as the municipality of Anchorage, but we should work with them and figure out all those appropriate ones that are identified by the CDC and remain flexible based on those CDC guidelines. Um, that's what the mistake was the first four months here. We failed this community miserably. Uh, our kids lost out. And, and it, it, there were many reasons for that. We can go back over that, but we should learn from that mistake and not repeat it again now. Um, we, and as far as the anecdotal evidence that Member Mitchell was pointing out, I'm hearing the exact opposite from parents. I'm hearing from many, many, many parents that are incredibly unhappy with what's happening with their kids through this virtual education. And it's, it's very much a case-by-case situation out there about the degree of education we're actually delivering to our students. And I think the majority, uh, unfortunately, are not getting, uh, education anywhere close to what they would if they were in the classroom during this period of time. And that is very concerning, what's happening to an entire generation of our students falling behind for where they've been. Uh, we've already got some of the lowest test scores in the nation in this state. And now we're, we, we should not, we should do everything we can to preserve the quality of education we're getting to our kids.
Next up, Member Mitchell.
Um, so I, um, agree that we should not have the same kind of parameters that the, just the community does. I think we should be, um, I think we should work with them, but there are some key differences. First of all, um, I agree with Member Marseth that it is kind of a sad state of affairs when we keep the bars open and the stores open and this, and restaurants, I mean, stores, people need to buy food, but, and we have the schools closed, but that is the way it is. Um, you know, I can speak to how things are done in Germany. They actually are paying businesses to close so that the schools can stay open. Um, but the difference there is that, you know, it's, it's people's choice. I mean, keeping the bars open, keeping the restaurants open, having people gather in their homes, not having more serious lockdowns are what are causing this disease to spread. Um, but those are still choices that people can make. If we open the schools, there are very many, um, students and staff who don't have choices involved with that. And, you know, there are, there are OSHA requirements. Student, employees have the right to, um, not go into the workplace if they don't think it's safe. And we saw, you know, car plants, my husband has contacts with the Whiting refinery in Whiting, Indiana. And I could go through all of the things that they had to do before they, they got that back up and running again. Um, there are, you know, there are workplace safety requirements that, and I, and the mitigation, again, I don't want to take anything away from all of the incredible planning that has been done. But I think that it is incumbent upon us to ensure the safety of our students. And again, there is research growing, they're starting to look more closely at children and viral spread among children. It has, it's something that wasn't measured, wasn't studied early on. And even an article that I think I shared with you all in The Atlantic has been discredited. Um, so I can share some more information around that. Um, I, I just, I, I strongly believe that it is our job as a board to make sure that we can deliver the education. Um, first and foremost, keep people physically safe. And I do believe there's a lot of good learning going on. Dave, I, uh, Member Donley, I hear you. There are a lot of families for whom this is extremely challenging and I absolutely do not want to take that away. Let's see if we can figure that out in the short term and figure out how to wrap around those people. Um, you know, however we can, if it needs to, if we need to pull more community members in until we can safely do things on a larger scale. Um, but, you know, I think we still have close to 6,000 employees. And we were talking about bringing most of them back into the buildings along with 9,000 students. Um, let's see if there are other solutions to the issues and the challenges and the, um, really tough situations that people have. Um, but again, I also am hearing many, many anecdotes about how this is actually working better for a lot of students. And I'd, I'd be happy to read those. I'm not sure that, um, Board President Vekalas would welcome that at this point in time, but I'm, I'm happy to share those.
Thank you for the offer of sharing them. Um, I would certainly welcome that, um, but not in this meeting at this time. Um, I'm sure we're all welcoming to hear those. Uh, we all, thank you. Next up, Board Member Holloman.
I was just going to say, in the process of talking about how badly we fail the community, I think you've got to take a moment and realize this has been one of the two best places in the country to be while the, the pandemic has swept through every other state in, at various times. So the failure is not exactly complete. Our kids are healthy. Our, our, for the most part, their parents are healthy. We've got a problem right now that's worse. We're not adding to it. Um, and we're doing what we can inside that context. Side, um, in terms of doing what we wish we were doing, we're not there. But to just call it a failure and not note the fact that a whole lot of us didn't go to the hospital, a whole lot of us didn't get sick, uh, I think what's past a real important success that Anchorage and Alaska have enjoyed.
Thank you. Seeing no hands in the queue, I'm going to take the opportunity to move on to our next non-action item. Um, we will always come back to this topic.
Good anecdotes.
Next up, Member Hildy, item number five, ASD Memorandum 062.
Thank you, Member Vekalas. So, um, so this is just a non-action item. The whole point of this is for us to have discussion. I, I do want to note that it's like 10:30 and this is the first time our board is going to get to talk about a substantive solution or any sort of thing like that. And, and I, I think that gets to the heart of what our board's been struggling with and really having direct, meaningful conversation about what's happening and, and saying, what do we want to do about it? Um, so I offered this, um, I'll just read the pertinent fact part. Since March of 2020, Anchorage Public School children have borne a heavy burden of sacrifice for our community's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is good and fitting for the Anchorage School District to be a leader in public health and for the actions of the school district to reflect the seriousness of this pandemic. It is not, however, appropriate for children to bear the weight and responsibility of responding to this pandemic without similar sacrifices by the whole community. The proposed motion directs the superintendent to continue the district's ongoing cooperative work with the state municipal health departments, as well as communicate this board's position that ASD students will not bear the negative impacts of this pandemic without consideration to equity across our community, equity in public education. So we looked, and, and really, this came out of our last board meeting where we're talking about, you know, not being able to come back on the 16th today and why that was. So Dr. Bishop had set forth a plan and everybody was preparing and community conditions were not appropriate, right? There, there's no denial that numbers are going up, absolutely. Like, we have to respond to that, but who responded to that? Only young children. That's, that's the person who made the sacrifices when we didn't have enough health, um, healthcare workers for our hospitals. That's who we said, guess what? It's your turn again. Um, that's, that's the part I have a huge problem with. Our kids haven't been in, in school since March. There's wonderful successes happening in online learning. If I'm sitting next to my kids, helping them, I mean, you could, can get a 26 to 25 adult to child ratio in some classes. You're going to have some really cool things happening with learning. Is that realistic across our district? No, we talked about our low-income student numbers today. Um, the, the challenges parents are facing is a, but that, that isn't even the heart of this. It is our community response. So we haven't, as a board, advocated for children aggressively. We've, you know, kind of hoped maybe numbers will go down. Um, and then none of us thought we'd get to this point, right? I think we're all quite surprised. We didn't really, even though perhaps maybe there were some predictive elements to it. But we haven't said, what's happening is unacceptable to children. They shouldn't be the ones carrying the brunt of this. Um, what that looks like, you know, you can, you can edit a motion if you don't like the wording, you want more clarity to it. That's, that's the easy fix of this. But the point I want our board to make is a clear support to Dr. Bishop so that when she goes and meets with public health authorities, like, let's use the November 16th opening as example, she would be able to articulate, and she has the backing of the board to say, actually, this has to be fair across our community. We're going to continue to do our part, just as we have since March, right? We, we did a great job in March, uh, responding quickly and aggressively, but it can't just be the school district. Um, and so when you're finding solutions, right? When public health authorities are finding solutions, when working with the municipality, we get to talk about the disproportionate impact this has had on young, on, on schoolchildren, right off the way through high school. That has to be a factor in this. What this isn't is to say, Assembly, you need to do this. You need to close this or open this or do this or that. I don't want to do their job. It's very challenging. I, I only want to work with them to find solutions. This is a directive to our community to say, what is our value? Do we really value public education? Because we're looking at some really long-term conflict harms to public education. Uh, it's really hard to build educational programs. Uh, they don't just turn back on, you don't get kids re-engaged by flipping a switch. You don't catch up a year of learning just overnight, especially if you don't have those supports already built in. So that's the discussion I hope to have with this. And I welcome lots of discussion, lots of input in it, to see what does this board really think and what kind of position do we want to take?
Do any board members have any, there they are. Uh, first one up, Board Member Marseth.
Ms. Hildy, I think, I honestly think that's what board members have been doing. It's just, I think, uh, Dina Mitchell has, has, um, communicated what she would support. I think, um, Donley has communicated what he would support. I've communicated what I would support. And I do believe, we do not have the expertise, um, as a board. We can read the articles just like everyone else, but we're not meeting with the health professionals. Um, we're not meeting with, um, all the individuals that Doc, um, Dr. Bishop was meeting with. And so I, she's always had my support. Um, and, and my support is, I'd like to open schools as soon as possible. And I understand the numbers, but, and maybe we do need to wait till they come down a little bit. But whatever Dr. Bishop recommends, I have to know that she spotted out. She has a team that she works with. She has, um, experts that she gets input from. And, um, all I can say is I've always supported her. And I believe that, um, the plan doesn't really, it can come from the school board, but I think the plan comes from Dr. Bishop. And then we decide as a board if we want to support that or not.
Next up in the queues, Board Member Mitchell.
Um, I agree that the plan comes from Dr. Bishop. I agree that the policy comes from the board. Um, I appreciate Member Hildy's, um, focus on really, I think it's the same thing you've been saying, Member Marseth, about, um, really making it clear that the community has to pull together to make this possible for our students. Because I absolutely do not want to start school with the numbers like this. Uh, there's no way I want to contribute more. Providence set up a, a temporary morgue. I do not want to contribute to, um, more cases, more deaths. I, absolutely not. Um, I do think that it would be, you know, I, I've heard from many people, Member Donley's heard from many people. Um, I know that each school has asked their students and their families, do you want to come back in person or do you want to go to ASD virtual? Um, I think maybe it's time for something that's a little bit more comprehensive. Um, maybe we need to ask families if we could figure out a way to stay the course. Um, would you want to stay the course or would you want to go in person or would you want to go virtual? Um, the study I mentioned earlier that was a joint, um, study between Harvard, Northeastern and Northwestern, found that many people were not comfortable going into the school buildings with this, with the numbers the way they are. So.
Member Mitchell, did you have comments, um, specifically to this non-action item?
Yeah, I, I think absolutely. We should be working with, um, the community broadly to understand what the priorities are and, and make that happen. So absolutely, yeah. Um, and I think, again, the PSAs are a good start. I, I think that we need to have some professional, um, you know, maybe we engage a PR firm in town. I, you know, I think there's a lot of people who would help on a pro bono basis. And I know there are organizations in town who are standing by to help, so.
Member Mitchell, this is the, did you see the motion that are, this non-action item is to direct the superintendent not to cancel reopening plans because of inequitable application of public health restrictions that have disproportionately impacted Anchorage Public School children? That's, that's the one I'm looking, because that would, could potentially be an action item for next week. So I'm hoping to get feedback on that.
No, I, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I thought the spirit of that, I thought you said it wasn't to be taken literally and the spirit of it was to get.
Well, there's a motion attached to it, though.
Okay, no, I would, I think that we need to, we can't unilaterally say we're going to make a plan and then no matter what happens with our numbers or with the community, we have to stick with it. So no, sorry, I, I misunderstood your intent.
Next up, Member Bellamy.
Yes, I have a question for Dr., uh, Dr. Bishop. How will this change what you're currently doing?
I believe it would be the unity of the board, being serious about having education and saying that we should be considered in the planning that's going on. So it actually gives the work and the arguments that we have about schools and their importance some teeth. So it doesn't mean that other things aren't considered. It just means that this board sees what's happening through education, taking the lion's share of the responsibility of being closed down, young children not receiving education. And I heard the word, you know, I used the term failing our kids, and that is that 30,000-foot inclusive statement that we are not, that actually matches this motion. So I, you know, I've shared, and I continue to, you know, redirect. I came up again today about, we're not failing, we're not failing our kids. I'm, you know, there are kids we saw that are doing well. We saw kids that are not. The bigger picture is, is that as we are making, as a community, making decisions, we are not thinking about the young people who are taking a significant impact during this time. And this would be a powerful statement that the board believes in the education of young people and how they're being impacted inequitably during this time.
So it's to the maker of the, the writer, to a Member Hildy. So when you write, can you explain a little bit? You said the district may not cancel reopening plans because inequitable application of public health restrictions. So what you're, are you advocating that come hell or high water, we have to, that the plan will stand if this is approved?
Absolutely not, Member Bellamy. I don't know that, I mean, thankfully, I don't think I've ever heard any board member quite say that. We can talk about, if there's a wording to tweak to make this more, that's why I want to talk about it. Tell me what, oh, that sounds a little confusing. Let's fix it to make it something the board can stand behind. That's, I don't have all the answers. I do want decision-making to be, include looking at the inequitable impact this has had on children, and specifically, public school children, right? I mean, there's a lot of kids going to, not a lot, but there are kids going to school in our community who are outside the public school system. So if you have a concern about the wording, share it now, and I'll, you know, I don't care, specific words, or add another sentence, or whatever you think is helpful.
Dr. Bishop had a quick comment.
Yeah, because certainly case counts are different, but I think this speaks to the evidence that other schools, you know, some are closing now because of case counts as well. But other schools that wasn't in the public sector were able to open. And I shared during my statement that the pushback not to have schools didn't start November 1st. It started August 15th when we announced it. And the evidence was on the Facebook post, like, we can't go back, we can't go back. So when we saw just different levels of our city operating, not operating, operating, not operating, we were just flat, and so it was very difficult to understand and to be able to speak for education. And I want to share with this board that the times that I've been with the city, I've really, and that was at October time when we opened, really, Dr. Chandler spoke with us. We all witnessed Dr. Johnson and Heather Harris, the director, really talking about understanding the needs in school and the disproportionality that those things have affected. Now, again, that was before our recent case counts. You know, we also chose to close ourselves. But when we were doing that work to open, specifically in October, November, when we've had to push it back, they understood, we articulated, and I just shared with them over and over again, that I'm speaking about education and as an education expert, understanding what this is doing to young people. And that they needed to understand that too, in their city, this is what's happening, and there's generational effects. And so they, those conversations occurred. We just, you know, couldn't get that. But now it isn't just going to be Dina, it's going to be the board. Our school board, our elected officials also say, this is important. Young people's education is important as we make decisions in our city. Just as they have in other places that have found ways to make it work with schooling, to be able to do what they can, whether that's, you know, their youngest staying in, you know, special programs going in, or phasing in. Really, it's dependent on that health and that service availability.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Holloman.
I do find the non-action item confusing. And I guess the main reason is, we can control the school district. We're not able to control the city. But those of us have spoken up about it. I mean, yeah, it is important. We want to get schools back open. We want businesses to be open. We want life to get as normal as possible. And the way to do that is to get the case rate, the level of hospitalization, all the things that come with the high transmission rate we've got right now, to get that down. Not just for our kids' health, for our economic health, it all matters. And we took the action that we've taken to keep kids safe, to put their health first, which we kind of have to. There are folks in the city that are unconcerned about it. We've done what we can to try to convince them. We don't have strong action from some of our leadership to really try to drive it down or make a big deal out of it. I don't know that the school board is going to be successful in trying to do it. But the idea that we will just send kids back regardless of what's going on in the community, and somehow that's going to make people value them more, doesn't, it just doesn't click with me. I don't understand the connection on it. We're out because there's no question that if we bring this many people together and have them spend hours next to each other, we are going to promote spread at a time when our numbers are high and there's a real danger to the well-being of our city. When that danger goes away, we'll be open again. In the meantime, a lot of people are putting a lot of work into being able to bring kids back safely, even in less than ideal conditions. And those are the barriers, those are the mitigations. Those are the practicing with masks and trying to encourage people to use them. So I think staff across the district are working hard, one, in educating the best they can under the conditions we've got. Two, trying to change the conditions in our schools so that they're safe. And three, we do what we can with the general public. But there's the reality that there's a chunk of the general public that does not want to alter their lifestyle to try to drive these numbers down, or they disagree with the science behind it. But we can't take an unsafe action with kids just because we're tired of that, or because we think it'll change the publicity about it and do something different. I think we have to do what we can do safely and be ready to go back. At the moment, we can really get back and be ready to do education the best we can in the meantime. Otherwise, we're really risking kids' lives. And that just seems untenable to me.
Member Hildy wanted an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I agree that we don't want to send kids back regardless of what's happening in the community. I don't intend for this to say that. If there's a wording to clarify that, absolutely. Like, we don't want to send kids back regardless of what's happening in the community. That's not anything this district's done at any time, right? It's always been part of the discussion. What I would like to do is make sure Dr. Bishop knows that we expect that public education gets a big seat at the table in decision-making. Who's going to be closing? How is our city going to respond? And right now, I can tell you, the result has been that kids have lost, right? We, in other communities, you know, when there was lower rates, right? You could close different things, or, you know, and I don't want to get into the Assembly's work because their work is really hard, and they're trying very hard to balance all of those factors just as well. But when she's at the table with public health people and saying, here's the needs, it's very powerful to say, actually, public education's really important, and children shouldn't be bearing the brunt of this. Let's find the solution, given our community transmission rates. Not disregard community transmission rates, but find the solution prioritizing, you know, children's learning.
I'm going to take a quick minute to chime in before a couple others, real quick. I was elected to a Board of Public Education, and so that's who I am here to represent. And I do believe that our children, you know, while we are doing the very best we can in online learning to the best of our abilities, they're the ones that aren't going back, where so many other, you know, places are open, whether it is private schools or any of the other parts of the economy. And I don't want to see this memo pit private against public, or pit public education against the economy, or any of those kind of things. I want it to help give the voice to public education that it is important. It needs to, you know, come up higher in the list and not be the one that always, you know, for the last three times, just continued to say, fine, we'll stand back, fine, we'll stand back. Want to be able to give our kids a voice at the table, which is who I feel like I'm here to represent. That being said, Member Marset, you're up next.
So here's my thought, and I asked for this before in the Assembly. For whatever reason, didn't want to comply, or to meet with us, or whatever. The only way we're going to be able to do this is with the help of the Assembly. I mean, I truly believe that. I believe that we need to open schools. There's a lot of reasons we need to open them. And I do believe that there is an equity in our city on who gets an education and who doesn't. And I don't see, I don't see any mandates on private schools, which means if you have the capability to enroll in a private school, your child will get an education as a traditional education. So I do think that the answer to this is to meet, and I know that Dr. Bishop has been meeting with individuals, but I'd like to come together with the Assembly, and let's propose a plan that's equitable for everyone, every child to get an education. And if that means enforcing mandates, however that looks, if that means, you know, all schools are closed because it's not safe, then all schools are closed because it's not safe. But I do feel like that we are fighting so hard for the education of our students, and yet we're, I don't want to, I know the Assembly has a lot on their plate, I mean, we all do. But I just feel like there's more that we can do together than we can do separate. And I don't want necessarily for the Assembly to tell us how to run the school board. But I would feel that if we could have a meeting to discuss what's possible, because as we know, if we go to put, open up schools, Assembly members come and visit our schools, they want to look to see what we're doing. I mean, they're involved in that sense, but we're not really working together. And I, I just feel like if we want to do something, then I think we need to get together and come up with a plan on how we're going to put education first for our students. Because we can talk about a lot of things. Dr. Bishop has done, the schools have done amazing work. But then we get public figures, we're public figures too, but then we get individuals in our schools that work against us instead of with us. And I'm not saying that's all Assembly members, but I think until we get everybody on board and we can work through this on what we need to do as a city to make education a priority, we're going to just be fighting with each other constantly. So that's my recommendation. You wanted a recommendation, you wanted a plan. That's what I come up with, and I do believe that whatever Dr. Bishop puts forward, I will support. And that'll be regardless, I mean, at this point, it'll be regardless of what's going on. If she and her team feel that that's where we need to go, then I'm behind them and I'm going to support them. And I'm certainly not telling any other board member to follow in my steps. Because each board member has to do what they think is right. It's a board of seven, I've always said that. And, but I think we need to come together, and I think we need to come together as a city. And we can't do that until, you know, you can make phone calls to individual Assembly members, you can write them emails. But I always believe until you sit down face to face and come up with a plan, it's hard to do those things. So that's my recommendation.
All right, I still have two board members' hands up in the queue. It is 10:51. We have to adjourn by 11:00 unless a board member is going to make a motion to extend by a specific amount of time. We still have the student nutrition COVID impact discussion, unless Board Member Marset would like to postpone that till the next meeting is a non-action item to discuss it then.
Yeah, I'll postpone it.
Okay.
That we extend our meeting to, at the very latest, 11:30. Do I have to say a purpose?
No, I just need a second if there is one.
I'll second it because it's already 1 o'clock here.
I have a first and a second. Anybody in opposition?
What are we going to talk about? What are we extending it to talk about?
Just finishing up the agenda, sir.
Well, if we get done sooner, we can, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying we have to do it till 11:30, but I think we need to move past all the conversations we've had and talk about how we're going to move forward, or if we're not going to, I mean, what is necessarily the solution?
Okay, so since there was a question about it, quick roll call vote. Just let me run down the list. In support of extending to 11:30, Member Hildy.
Yes.
Okay, Hildy's a yes, I'm a yes. Member Marset?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Yeah, I did it procedurally. Next up in the queue, Member Mitchell.
So I hear what everybody's saying, and I agree. We have been asked, I have been asked, Star and I have been asked by a couple of Assembly members to present them with a resolution to propose how they can support us. So Star and I have a draft going, and we've had a couple of things come up in the past week, so we haven't gotten past the initial draft. I have it here in front of me. I can send it to the entire board. I guess I would, I think that what, Member Hildy, I'm wondering if you would consider going with a resolution instead of the action item that you have. And I'll just tell you, the name of this resolution, I'm not going to go through all the wheresses and just the therefore. The resolution requesting the Anchorage Municipal Government and the Alaska State Government to partner with the Anchorage School District in promoting community-wide safe COVID behavior to support in-person learning to resume in the Anchorage School District. And I have a bunch of wheresses. We, Star and I both put this together. And then the therefore, and this is a very rough first draft. Now therefore be it resolved that the Anchorage School Board requests that the Anchorage Municipality and the Alaska State Administration partner with the Anchorage School District to increase compliance with municipal executive orders and state executive orders designed to bring COVID spread under control in order to open schools to in-person learning as soon as possible through all available means, such as enforcement of executive orders and increased education to residents about why mitigation is critical to decreasing COVID cases, and outreach to all residents through as many means as practical with the purpose of dramatically lowering COVID cases. So, or COVID levels, I'm not sure what the right wording is. So, Member Hildy, I'm wondering if you might consider a resolution in lieu of your proposal?
Go ahead, Member Hildy.
Oh, I mean, I did chuckle when you said, would you consider changing it to a resolution?
Yes, we know how you feel.
I'm not opposed to doing anything. I want a solution. That is why we're here, this is why we're at this topic point. I think what you offered is pretty weak, like, please, please care about public education. I don't think that's going to do anything. I don't think that's going to do anything. You know, what I can do is tell Dr. Bishop, hey, we are, we're serious. And when you're talking in figuring out solutions, because we're not in all those meetings, right? She's in it every day. You know, advocate, push for it. We, we want kids to be considered. So I, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I, I don't, I don't see that doing anything. I, I totally, and I absolutely want to recognize the Assembly for reaching out to say, let us know. So if we can do something that says, here's concrete steps, and I think that's really what they're looking for, education-related, not, there are many other products they're working, you know, things they're working on. So I'm happy to discuss that with you. But I, this is the motion I'm going to offer right now. And if I see something better, if somebody offers an amendment or, you know, make it better. That's, that's a great idea.
So from a procedural standpoint, this non-action item is set to go to action at the next meeting. But if the resolution that Members Marsette and Mitchell, you know, are working on can get put on, you know, either, you know, as a non-action or an action item for the next meeting, it just has to be done, you know, get it in so we can get it circulating and into the queue. You know, is, we, we just have to get it going. And at least we have something to discuss between.
You could put it on as a placeholder for agenda planning and then Member Mitchell could get it to.
Yeah, but getting it to board members so that they can read it and digest it and be able to come with meaningful, you know, comments or questions or edits or whatever it is. That would be my suggestion, Member Mitchell. Is if you can get it sent in, we can put a placeholder on the agenda for it and, you know, to be able to dig into it, you know, in a meaningful way.
Will do.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Don't see any other hands in the queue.
Oh, I got one other thing.
Okay.
I know, sorry. So looking at the way this is written now, I can't support it. But I could support, direct the superintendent that through the major school, you would just may not cancel reopening plans. Because the way this reads, it says the district may not cancel reopening plans. And there may be a reason that Dr. Bishop puts it out there, and for some reason, she does need to cancel it.
Right.
What we're, we're saying that she can't cancel it. So what if, I mean, this is my, my personal opinion, but what if it says the board will support Dr. Bishop in reopening, in reopening schools, how do we want to put this? The board will support Dr. Bishop reopening plans as present, I don't know. I know all board members won't vote for that either, so. I just can't vote for this way, way it states, but the way I would state it, I know it wouldn't get passed either, I don't think. Because what I would say is, the, the board will support the superintendent's plans to reopen schools because of inequitable application of public health restrictions. And to me, that's whatever she presents us. And when she presents it, we support her. And I, you know, we can change that, we can not change it. But that's, that's what I would support.
So at this time being a non-action item, if you want to send Katie and Alicia any possible, you know, wording, you know, changes. And she's a pretty good wordsmith, so if you change her what the intent or the meaning of something that, you know, just might need some clarification, you know, she might be able to, you know, help tweak it herself. So that we can get a final draft posted on the next agenda for the public to see, you know, in a timely manner. That would be super helpful because we.
I'll try to get, yeah, I'll try to get it to her tomorrow.
Yeah, like Member Hildy said, this is to start the conversation and, you know, to have these discussions. And if there are changes, she's open to changes. So go ahead and send them to her and we'll see. And maybe what is on the action item, you know, in two weeks, you know, passes, maybe it doesn't. But it's starting the conversation. The same with the, the resolution that the two of you would like to put forth. So let's go ahead and leave it at that right now. I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue. We will come back to the student nutrition COVID conversation because that sounds like it's a multimillion dollar question that is worth having a conversation about. Going on in the agenda, there is no more public testimony. Do any school board members or administration have any final last comments they would like to bring to the table?
Yes, sorry.
Member Marsette?
So I, I'm just going to put this out there. You know, I am a person. I am an elected official. But being elected doesn't mean that you can be rude or call me names or be disrespectful. I always appreciate any comments I get. I know that people don't always agree. That is what makes America great. We don't agree. But I listen. And sometimes I listen and what's presented to me changes my mind. But during this time, when it is so stressful for everyone, and I get that, I get that a lot of people are experiencing stress, I don't appreciate not being treated as a human being. Because I'm an elected official, people feel like that we somehow deserve or because we're a public official, that you can say whatever you want to us. So yes, I am resigning here very soon. And you can say whatever you want about that. Everyone has their opinion. All I ask is that you, even if you don't respect me, be courteous. If you don't have anything nice to say, as my mother said, don't say anything at all. Because I will not respond. And Rebecca, I'm sorry I responded the way I did. And I take that, I, I do apologize for that. But just try to keep that in mind, that we're all human, we all have feelings. And being an elected official does not give anybody the right to be crude or rude or harassing or bullying or any of those things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that. And I think we, you know, would all agree that we have a, there's a lot of emotion out there. And it is incredibly, it's, it's difficult sometimes. And so I don't see any other hands up in the queue at this time. I just want to let the public know. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, December 1st. We look forward to, oh, Member Hildy, you had your hand up.
If you have an agenda item you want to discuss, if there's something you're like, I want to discuss this, you could say it now and somebody else could second it and she could get on the agenda. We don't, we can get things out, we can get them, you know, or think about it tonight. Text it to Katie and Lisa tomorrow and it's okay to have something you want to talk about.
Do we have a placeholder for the resolution as a non-action item?
It will be there, yes.
Or as an action item for resolutions?
Can we do it, can we go straight to action? We can, can't?
Or no?
Yeah.
Nine days, we can.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Member Hildy.
All right, I see no other hands up in the board queue or the administration queue. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a good night, everybody. We'll see everybody in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.